Good evening and welcome to. Saying it again, good evening and well, welcome to Milbury City Council meeting for November ninth, two thousand and twenty one. Welcome all of you tonight. My apologies for those who've been waiting. We just finished up with our first district, community meeting, and we will be moving on here quickly. If we could please do roll call. City Clerk Gonzalez.
Yes, Councilmember Holliver.
Present.
Councilmember Fung.
Yeah.
Councilmember Papin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Oliva.
Here.
Mayor Schneider.
Here.
All members of the city council are present.
Thank you. And if everyone could please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, and City Clerk, if you could please pull up the first ceremonial presentation. I am going to take a moment to let you look at my attire. The mayor Rico Medina of San Bruno and myself and our city managers had a bet on the return of the Battle of the Strip football game, that is, the CAP versus Mills football game. And while Mills played valiantly, the football, Cappuccino won the football game fifty-six to zero. So I am wearing Cappuccino colors.
Oh.
Cappuccino colors tonight, and the city of Milbury will be planting a tree in San Bruno with a plaque that celebrates the return of this annual competition between a friendly, maybe competition between San Bruno and Milbury. I just want to congratulate the athletes, the cheer squad, and the bands. I'm a CAP grad myself. It was so lovely to hear and see the marching band again. Congratulations to you all, but to the football players, you kicked butt, and here I am. All right, moving on, if we can pull up the ceremonial. It is with great honor tonight to proclaim that whereas in nineteen fifty-four, President Dwight D Eisenhower signed the first Veterans Day proclamation to pay homage to our servicemen and women and to commit the nation to honoring their efforts at home and abroad. And whereas the freedoms that we enjoy do not come without a price. Throughout history, our veterans have left the comforts of home to serve and defend our nation. And whereas our country's veterans act as a lasting example of American bravery and heroism, dedicating themselves to selflessly protecting and preserving our country's citizens and values. And whereas Veterans Day is a time for us to reflect upon the enduring devotion of our military members and their families, and to give thanks to those who tirelessly work to uphold the Constitution. And whereas the city of Milbury is grateful for all of our veterans and acknowledge the great struggles and sacrifices they make for us. We pay tribute to our veterans and honor their incredible contributions and devotion to this country. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Milbury City Council, do hereby proclaim November eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one, as Veterans Day. And it is my pleasure to introduce our local community activist, veteran, and a part-time staff member for the city of Milbury, Paul Harrell, who will be accepting this.
And.
Paul, can you join us?
I thank you very much for this acknowledgement. This is something I would never thought of, man, but and then I got this from your city council for the Milbury about the twenty twenty-one Veteran of the Year. I said, wow, this are little things I do just to keep happy and help one another, and it's been acknowledged. I appreciate this.
Well, thank you. You always make me smile. So Paul has also been honored by the county at an event on the tenth tomorrow. And just for the city of Milbury and for council, we are having the topping up or core, the developer who is building the Veterans Preferred Housing in Milbury. We have a topping off event tomorrow at eleven o'clock, and Paul is my guest at that. And City Hall will be closed on Thursday to recognize this national holiday and all of our veterans who serve, who are employees from our city manager on down. So congratulations, veterans. I did see a couple of council members hands up. I know we're running late, but I'm happy to call you if you'd like to speak. Okay, I'm seeing shaking heads. Mr. Paul, I'll see you tomorrow.
Yes, thank you very much.
Take care.
Acknowledgement. Have a wonderful evening.
You too.
Everyone else, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, moving to our next proclamation. Whereas the United States is a diverse nation whose continued strength comes from its willingness to accept and embrace that diversity. And whereas the city of Milbury does not and will not tolerate any form of prejudice, racism, bigotry, hatred, bullying, or violence toward any individual or group within our community. And whereas our city is made great by the diversity of our people and the growth that comes when we come together and support one another. And whereas the city of Milbury is reaffirming our commitment to creating an equitable and inclusive community for all residents and visitors, a community that is free of hate and racism. And whereas education, compassion, cooperation are key to understanding, embracing, and appreciating the differences between people. And whereas the city of Milbury joins other cities across the state and country in recognizing United Against Hate Week as a vital step in strengthening and maintaining our great community. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Milbury City Council, do hereby proclaim November fourteenth to the twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one, as United Against Hate Week. And we have presenting or accepting this tonight. I'm looking for you. I'm sorry, my screen's not changing.
Yes, I'm right here.
There you are. Caitlin Chang, if you could please join us.
Right, so my name is Caitlin, and I'm here with Max on behalf of the Students for Social Justice Club at Mills. And going back to that Battle of the Strip football game where Mills Vikings, so you know, we're a little upset at that fifty-two zero loss, but you know, there's all fun and games in that. But yes, we're here to accept this proclamation, and we just want to express our support in the city of Milbury, accepting this United Against Hate Week and establishing it in Milbury. And we think it's a really important step in combating racism and bigotry within our community. And that extends to our own peers within school and making our school a safer community as well. So again, we just want to express our support and appreciation for the city for passing this proclamation. And that's about it.
Thank you, Caitlin. And it's my understanding you are working with the city on our other activities to bring people together. So I am, we are all very grateful for your time and for everything you and your group are doing at Mills.
Thank you so much.
Keep safe. And there's next year. We'll get CAP next year. So with that, thank you. All right, City Manager, Agenda Overview and Staff Briefing.
Okay, Mayor, yes, thank you, and good evening again to you and the city council and the community. I think I'll give the staff briefing real quick and then move into the agenda. So tonight, as you mentioned, we just concluded a, an hour and a half of very robust meeting regarding the formation of city council districts. This was the first public meeting of many that we need to do between now and the end of February. So the city is beginning that process in engaging the community for creation of city council districts. Again, a very important decision that needs to be made between now and December eighth is five districts and a rotating mayor or four districts and electing a mayor at large. There was some communication about kind of slowing this process down. Unfortunately, under state law, we don't have the ability to slow down the process. We are under a timeline that is dedicated, that is legislated to us under the California Voters Rights Act. So we do have a website. It is configuremillbrae.org. C O N F I G U R E M I L L B R A E dot org. All the questions, as well as public participation and information can be found at that website. We also have information translated in Chinese and Spanish. So configure.org. Also, as Paul had mentioned and Mayor you had mentioned, we have our Veterans Day salute and flag raising ceremony on Veterans Day, which is this Thursday, starting at eight AM, out in front of City Hall here at Constitution Plaza, that's six twenty-one Magnolia Avenue. Everyone is welcome, not just veterans. And but we do ask everyone to consider, you know, wearing masks and continuing all of the COVID-nineteen protocols that we have in place. So come out and salute our local veterans. We had it for the first time last year, and we had about forty, forty veterans that attended. So it's great to see our veterans here in Milbury. So tomorrow, our Thursday, at eight AM in front of City Hall. Also, our spur trail tree planting ceremony. This Friday, we will be holding another tree planting ceremony. The ceremony will honor the participants and their participation in dedicating a tree. We have thirty out of fifty of the trees that have been purchased, and this is in the city council adopted Memorial Grove in the spur trail between Hillcrest and Taylor. And then also, November thirteenth, coming up this Saturday, join us with our Public Safety Day. This will be held from ten AM to two PM. Five-eleven Magnolia Avenue, which is our, out in front of the police station and fire station, right next to City Hall. You can meet the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office Officer, deputies, the patrol of the city, as well as members of our Central County Fire Department to provide paramedic and fire service to the community and other employees. So it's a great opportunity to learn more about the city, Central County Fire Department, our Sheriff's Department, and how we keep Milbury safe, running smoothly, and our community outreach effort. So again, Public Safety Day, this Saturday, November thirteenth, from ten AM to two PM. Also on Saturday, we have a Unity Celebration event that's happening. Hope everybody can join us from ten AM to two PM. Again, meeting here at five-eleven Magnolia and actually out between the Chacuti Room and the library. No, excuse me, I stand corrected. Our Unity Celebration starts at three PM. At three PM, the other event was meet our sheriff and CCFD started at two. So Unity Celebration, we're partnering with the Anti-Racist Coalition to host the Unity Celebration on Saturday, November thirteenth, starting at three o'clock, and it will go to four thirty PM. And the event will take place again at Library Square, which is between the library and the Chacuti Room here at the City Hall complex. The event will open the United Against Hate Week that the city council adopted and the resolution, and the United Against Hate Week is from number fourteen through the twenty-first. So participants will be able to light a candle for someone that they would like to honor and remember, and we'll have some guest speakers. And it should be a great event. So again, three o'clock to four thirty this Saturday out at Library Square. And then also, just something just came live on Monday, yesterday. It's called Choose Local San Mateo County. It's a free smartphone app designed to support local businesses. And this is Choose Local San Mateo County Reward, Reward Residents and Visitors with Points for shopping at local businesses. So you shop at a local business, you get different points and discounts off purchases here in San Mateo County. So each San Mateo County point equals one dollar, so that's pretty significant, which can then be easily redeemed at a local business, again, that choose to participate. And it's funded by the county and SAMPSCITA, San Mateo County Economic Development Association. And we are, the city of Milbury is participating. So again, look for that app for your smartphone, and it's Choose Local San Mateo County. And then lastly, with the upcoming Thanksgiving holiday, we do have a Thanksgiving tennis camp that our Recreation Department is offering. So it's a tennis camp for seven, age seven to twelve years old, and it's at the beginner and intermediate levels. The camp will run from November twenty-second through November twenty-fourth, from nine AM to noon each day. And it'll be at the tennis courts out at the location of our recreation center near Taylor Middle School. And so those interested can learn more and register at the website, B I T dot L Y backslash M I L R E C. Again, B I T dot L Y backslash M I L R E C, or call six five zero two five nine two three six one. So Mayor, that concludes a very brief update of what's happening. Moving on to.
Thank you.
Yep, moving on to the agenda. We have our standard items, our calendar of events that's in the council packet for information, reports and bills and claims. Also an information item, a report out of the November third, two thousand and twenty-one closed session. Item number three on the agenda, we have approval of the meeting minutes for the regular meeting of October twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. There are no oral reports this evening from committee or commission chairs. Then we move into the public comment on the agenda. Public communication, is anyone from the public that would like to address an item not on the agenda to the city council? So those are items not on the agenda. Citizens are limited to three minutes of time. Then we move to the consent calendar, starting with item number five. Item number five is to consider approval of a parking lot and street closure, as well as a staffing cost and fee waiver for the Lunar New Year Festival that will be held February fifth of two thousand and twenty-two. Item number six is to waive the second reading and adopt the ordinance for the city of Milbury, adding chapter six point four-five regulator, regulating mandatory organic waste disposal reduction throughout the city. Item number seven is consideration of a resolution accepting the annual report and receipt on the use of development impact fees for the year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Item number eight is to consider adoption of a resolution authorizing our interim public works director to sign a transportation funds for clean air grant agreement for our citywide bicycle and pedestrian detection project. Item number nine is to consider a resolution of local support, authorizing the filing of an application for regional discretionary funding assigned to the Metropolitan Metropolitan Transportation Commission and committing any necessary matching funds and stating assurance to complete the project, which is known as the Milbury Transit Center Mobility Hub Pilot Project. This was already funded by MTC, and so this is acceptance or the filing, authorizing the filing of the application. Item number ten is to consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the First Amendment to the Agreement with ELS Architecture and Urban Design for additional changes of F F and E. That's furniture, fixtures, and equipment in our Recreation Center project. Then we move to public hearing items. We have one public hearing. That's item number eleven, and that's to consider a resolution amending the Milbury Stationery Specific Plan reimbursement fees. Those reimbursement fees are for the preparation of the plan itself and the environmental impact report. Under existing business, we move to item twelve. Consider participation in the Peninsula Clean Energies Public Facility Solar and Storage Procurement Process for the Milbury Recreation Center. Item number thirteen under existing business is to review the final approved public art and the new Harriet Tubman statue for the Gateway at Milbury Station project, also known as TOD two on the east side of the existing transit station. New business, starting with item number fourteen. Consider the locations and installation of park benches as part of the plastic bags to park bench recycling program that the city's been working with the Leos and the Lions. Item fifteen, this is the last item on the agenda this evening before council comments. Item fifteen is to consider a resolution to adopt the two thousand and twenty-one San Mateo County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. And then Mayor, we move to city council comments and adjournment.
Thank you, City Manager. Ms. Casman, do you want to do the report out of the October twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-one closed session?
Question, Madam.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I could briefly pull item nine, and then if anybody's on this meeting for proclamation for the fourteen U Milbury mischief girls softball team, we're going to have that for you at the next meeting. So congratulations to them, and we'll talk about it then. Thank you.
Yay, good news. Love good news. Um, okay. Joan, if you would like, so I've got one item to pull on consent calendar, but let's go backwards to report out of the October twenty-six meeting. Joan?
Did we?
I think, Michael, I think you're muted.
Yeah, Michael Conneran.
Okay, Michael Conneran.
No. I'm having trouble.
We can hear you. Oh, now we can't. Mine shows that you're muted.
Mine's muted as well.
Can you unmute?
There, okay. Keys right there. I think you're muted now.
Can you hear me?
You're coming in great.
Great. So the council met in closed session on November third to consider a matter of pending litigation.
Excuse me, Mr. Conneran, this is the October twenty-sixth, not the November third. Sorry to interrupt.
I'm sorry. No, those are the minutes, aren't they?
I'm just reading what was on the agenda.
Mine says.
There's confusion.
November third closed session.
It's November third closed session and October twenty-sixth meeting minutes.
Okay.
So November third, council met to consider a pending litigation matter, Anton Devco Inc. versus City Milbury. There was no reportable action taken at that session. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to agenda item number three. Approval of minutes of October twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-one. If there are no changes, can I have a motion? Councilwoman Papin, your hand is raised.
No, move approval. Second, the approval, Oliva.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any comments? City Clerk, if you could call the vote, please.
Councilmember Holliver.
I'm standing.
Councilmember Fung.
Aye.
Councilmember Papin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Oliva.
Aye.
Mayor Schneider.
Aye.
The city council approves the regular meeting minutes of October twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-one by a vote of four zero one with Councilmember Holliver abstaining.
Thank you, City Clerk. Agenda item number four is all reports from city commission or committee chairs. We have none of those tonight. So moving on to public communication. This is for the public to comment on items that are not on tonight's city council agenda. In lieu of time, you'll be limited to two minutes or less. Thank you. Looking for hands raised? I am not seeing any hands raised. City Clerk, do you see anybody on the phone flagging you?
I do not see anyone with their hand raised.
Closing public comments. Moving on to consent calendar. If there can be, is anyone else wanting to pull an item from consent? We have pulled agenda item number nine.
Move to approve everything on the consent calendar. Less, less item nine.
I can make a quick comment. We can do them all at once.
Go ahead and make a quick comment then, Councilwoman.
Okay, I just think it's really important. Item nine here is a grant for three hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. In the future, when we have these items that we put the dollar amount in here, that city staff was able to obtain here. Another item was four hundred something thousand, and these grants are very important to the sustainability of our city. So I think the public should be quite aware of those, especially if they're on consent. And tomorrow, it looks like Milbury will be getting an additional three hundred and forty-seven thousand on another project, which I hope when we bring that forward, we can let the public know, at least in the description of the agenda consent items. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Good suggestion. All right. Vice Mayor, you made a motion to approve everything but nine. Would you like to amend that to include nine?
I would like to amend that, and I thank you, Councilmember Papin, because that's exactly what my questions were. But I thought that I didn't know if we were voting on that or that it was approved. So thank you for clarifying that very much. Motion to approve all the consent calendar items.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilman Fung. Any further discussion? Okay, City Clerk, could you call the vote, please?
Councilmember Holliver.
Aye.
Councilmember Fung.
Aye.
Councilmember Papin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Oliva.
Aye.
Mayor Schneider.
Aye.
The city council approves consent items five, six, seven, eight, nine, and ten by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Just let me get to my agenda here. Thank you, City Clerk. All right, public hearing. This is consideration of a resolution amending the Milbury Station Area Specific Plan, the MSASP reimbursement fees. This is an action item. City Manager, do you have a presentation?
We do, Mayor. I would like to introduce our planning manager, Mr. Roscoe Mata, for a presentation.
And while staff is getting their presentation up, I'm going to open, formally open the public hearing. Do we need a vote to formally open public hearing?
Not required.
Thank you. Formally open public hearing.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Roscoe Mata, and I am presenting the item before you this evening, which is Milbury Station Area Specific Plan Reimbursement Fee Amendment. This item is a consideration of a resolution amending the MSASP reimbursement fees. So the objective tonight is to adopt a resolution to revise the reimbursement fees for the preparation costs of the MSASP. Just a little bit of background, the Milbury Station Area Specific Plan was originally adopted in nineteen ninety-eight, and at the request of the two large developments around the Milbury Station, Republic Urban and Milbury Station, MSASP was updated in two thousand and sixteen. Both of these developers are to get reimbursed for a fair share proportionate amount as future development occurs in this planned area. The update resulted in increased heights and densities in this planned area, and also the EIR that was prepared as part of the plan allows future projects to tear off of the ER for streamlined secret review. And on March ninth of this year, the city council adopted a resolution to establish reimbursement fees in the MSASP. Subsequent to that meeting, staff recognized some errors in the lot size that was the basis for preparing, establishing the fees. And these lot sizes were attributed to certain areas and properties within the MSASP. So here is the boundary of the Milbury Station Area Specific Plan shown in the red dashed line. And you can see the different colors in the plan that show the different heights with blue teal, sixty-five feet maximum height, and then purple is centered by ninety to hundred feet maximum height, and then red eighty-five feet, and then on the west side of the Milbury Station, a hundred and eight, a hundred and twenty-one feet in the dark gray. So this resolution that was passed, adopted in March of this year, established parcels that are subject to the fee and the methodology that was used to determine the amount per parcel. The amount payable is prior to the design review permit being scheduled for public hearing before the planning commission. Prior to the approval of a staff level of design review permit, or if a design review permit is not required before the issuance of the first building permit. So this is all consistent, as exists today. And here is a map that shows the areas that are subject to the fee, and the areas that are outlined in green are the areas that are subject to this reimbursement fee. And these are the areas that received a density increase greater than fifteen feet. This is a little bit complicated, but just a little bit of background how this was calculated. We determined the amount of cubic, total cubic feet or volume that was that was increased from the previous plan nineteen ninety-eight to the two thousand and sixteen. We determined the update cost of the, of the plan, including secret review and staff processing costs. We divided the, that amount into the one point nine million for the update cost, and then come up with a rate of point three five three. And then to determine the fee, you would multiply the lot area times the height increase that was allowed as a result of the update by the rate. Also, another way to calculate it is the volume increased by the rate, and that with the fee. So here is a charge and attachment five. Basically, the lot sizes in this column here in blue were revised to the numbers immediately to the left of it. And these numbers here were stricken out to show that the previous number that were shown in the system plan. The previous number that were shown in the system plan. Here is the column on the right with a yellow highlight are the new fees. As a result of the adjustments. And then the third column to the right is the original fee. And then as a result of. That the two different, the differences between the two columns are the last column, which is on the right here in orange. And that shows the adjusted fees for the each area and. All those properties that are subject to the fee. So, again, here's the, the original chart that shows the, the math behind the calculation. The text in red, the stricken numbers are the amounts that were changed. And adjusted, and then the text in blue are the new numbers, basically adjusting the cubic volume of. Of land that was adjusted as a result of those errors. So, there is no fiscal impact to the city adopting this resolution, amending the reimbursement fees, the total cost of the MSASP update. With the EIR was determined to be one point nine, a little bit over one point nine million. And the TOD developers, one and two have already paid this amount. So. You, all future development would pay into this amount on the respective fee. And the revenues would go to the developers and reimburse them. So, tonight's action is to adopt a resolution amending the specific plan reimbursement fees. For the Millbrae Station area specific plan as shown in attachment number one. Staff is available to answer the questions that council may have.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mata. Counsel, if you've got some questions, then I'll open it up to the public and then bring it back for a vote. Councilwoman Papen.
Madam Mayor, I think you already opened the public hearing, so I think I'd.
No, no, that's not what I said. I said, if you've got any questions, then I'll open it up for public comment and then back to us. Yes, I've already opened the hearing.
Well, I'd like to hear from the public then first before we answer.
If there, if there are no council comments, then I'll bring it over to the public. So, if you have no comments and I don't see anyone else. Fine, I'll open it up to the public.
I will have comments after the public hearing. Thank you.
You have both opportunities, Councilwoman. All right, public, this is your chance. If you want to comment on the fee schedule for the Millbrae specific area plan, please raise your hand or let us know if you're on the phone. I am not seeing any hands raised. City Clerk Eduardo, do you see anything at your end?
I am not seeing anyone with their hand raised.
Okay, closing public comment and bringing it back to city council. Councilwoman Papen.
Thank you. How did this happen?
Staff found the correction areas we relied on previous data that was collected, but there was, there's no exact. Science to collect, collect accurate data. Only way to do that would have to survey of all the properties, search different databases and found. Correct some of the discrepancies that we found in previous data collection.
Well, I'd like to note that the current staff was not present at that time. I appreciate the new staff. Rectifying this and. Just find it disheartening that prior staff was not. Up and, or accurate enough when this was first proposed. So, thank you to current staff for all you do and all your efforts. So, thank you.
Thank you, city. Thank you, Councilwoman. City Manager, correct me. But the city has asked the Federal Aviation Administration to be able to do some remote sensing. And surveying of this entire area, and the FAA has said no. So, we are beginning the process of reaching out to Supervisor Spear's office. I've already spoken to her district director to give us permission. Hold on Congressman Spear.
Thank you.
And Brian Perkins, so that we can get the FAA to allow us to do some better surveys of all of the land. Adjacent to the railroad tracks and all the way to one oh one. It's tying our hands right and left. And right now, the FAA is blocking us from doing better surveys. Vice Mayor Oliva.
Yeah, I, on the same, the same lines, it's like, where'd this come from? Where, where's it gonna be and where's it gonna go? Because like, are we gonna be like? Always having to survey this and have another opinion, so to speak, on, on these lines or. Well, first, first, where did it come from? I guess Gina just asked that. But. Is this now engraved and we don't have to worry about it anymore?
That, that's correct, Councilwoman. We audited the lot size and corrected the errors that, that we found.
So, you audited it for what? Like, where did it come from? What, what brought this up? What, where'd the audit come from?
When we were looking at the, the fee chart and the amounts that were assessed. We noticed that one of the fees were off. And we. We went through and went through all the properties and then checked to make sure that all of them were correct and.
So, we found our own errors. We found our own error. Is that correct?
Right, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any further comments, counsel?
Yes, please. One last one.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. So, to be clear, it looks like the error of private staff, our prior staff, did we lose money? We should have been charging the developments?
No, we didn't. The, the only two developments that have occurred are the two development entities that we're actually reimbursing with the collection of this fee. So, as Roscoe was saying, as we were looking at entitling permits for other development projects. That's when community development had, had found this error. Coming back to correct it.
Will we be reimbursing these developers more money?
I believe. Yeah, Roscoe, I'll refer to you if we can answer that. I think Roscoe will be answering that question.
I will, will be reimbursing them. We haven't received any reimbursement fees yet. None, none of the properties subject to this fee have had to pay the fee. And the amounts that we're going to be reimbursed to the developers are, have adjusted. So. In some parts, they'll be getting a little bit less, as are also the allocation, because one area. Was over, overstated by a couple of acres. So, as a result, that fee went down and every, every other area had to be adjusted a little bit higher.
And I will caution, caution legal counsel here, because I think there's a conflict of interest. So, thank you to staff.
Thank you, Councilwoman Papen and Mr. Mata. Any further comments? All right, if there could be, this is an action item, if we can have a motion to approve. Thank you, Councilwoman Oliver. And that was Councilman Fung?
Yes, please.
Thank, thank you, Councilman Fung. Any further discussion? City Clerk, could you call the vote, please?
Councilmember Oliver.
Aye.
Councilmember Fung.
Aye.
Councilmember Papen.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Oliva.
Aye.
Mayor Schneider.
Aye.
The city council approves a resolution amending the Millbrae Station area specific plan reimbursement fees by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. And my mistake, I did not close the public hearing. So, closing it after the fact. All right, moving on to existing business, item number twelve. I'm sure staff has a presentation to get ready. This is an action item. Participate in Peninsula Clean Energy's public facility solar and storage procurement process. Staff, please take it away.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I would like to introduce Mr. Dave Frybush from Peninsula Clean Energy. We're going to have him give the presentation this evening. So, without any further ado, Dave.
Great, thank you, Tom, and thank you, council members. I believe that Rafael Reyes, who. Oh, he is. Okay, great. I'm going to turn over to Rafael to start the presentation. I'll run it from my computer and then we'll do a, a switch off in the middle. So, but please go ahead, Rafael.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members and Millbrae city staff. Thank you for so much for your time today. We're very pleased here to present to you an opportunity, which hopefully you'll be interested in. In support, and that is a group purchase program that we are pulling together for city facilities across our service territory. Next slide, please. First, a little bit of background. Most of you are likely familiar with Peninsula Clean Energy. We are the energy service provider for the county. Non-for-profit public agency whose mission is to reduce greenhouse gases and provide access to sustainable and affordable. Energy solutions. And in that capacity, we provide cleaner power at lower rates. And residents and businesses in our service territory have saved over seventeen million dollars a year. As a consequence of the energy, lower cost energy service that we provide. Next slide. In addition, we also have a range of programs to support clean energy in the territory. From electric vehicles to cleaner buildings and here to solar systems, clean energy for facilities. And the program that we're talking about here is one in which we are offering no cost support. To local governments assessing sites and facilitating group purchases. For solar and in some cases, storage systems as well. And the objectives here are obviously first to, to provide clean power. At even better cost of that power for the facilities. And in doing so, an opportunity to, to reduce not only current electric costs, but also future. Electric costs. As part of the solar deployment. In, and we will be doing this through a procurement model that brings together sites across the service territory. To reduce costs for all of these installations. And this is a pilot. Our intention is to reproduce this or repeat this on a regular basis. So, this will be, this facility and opportunity for Millbrae would be to participate in that first round.
I'm sorry, Rafael, there's some background noise. Everybody else being muted.
Everyone else is muted except the speakers. Gina, I've already texted the city clerk on it.
I apologize. Well, with that, I'm going to turn it over to our team lead on this program. Dave Frybush to talk through the specifics of the program. Thank you.
Great. So, the, where we have started with this program, we've been, we've looked at ten municipal and six county sites. We went to all the sites to do a detailed evaluation for solar. There's a few sites where we're looking at solar plus storage, but mostly these are solar, solar only projects. And where we are now, as Rafael said, is moving towards an aggregate procurement. And so, we are, we have this portfolio of sites with detailed plans and the documentation. For the contractors that would install the systems to be able to put together a bid based on what we've, what we've done. So far in terms of site plans and the technical documentation that would be required. And now, we are going to each municipality in the county and asking them to, to commit to. Moving forward if we are able to provide a beneficial project. And we'll talk a little bit more about what that, how we're defining that. So, in general, the, the model that we're looking at is rather than each city. Having to do your own procurement, use your own staff time and run a procurement to put solar on, you know, one facility. We are looking to take that on ourselves, on our shoulders, to do the procurement, the installation, the management, to running the solicitation. For the equipment and to managing that project over its, its project life. And we are hoping to drive down costs for everyone by being part of this, this aggregation. And then we would issue a, a power purchase agreement to the city. It would be based on the facility specific equipment that's going in, but it would be a rate that's lower than the utility rate. It would include maintenance over the cost of the project. There's no upfront costs and we're not, there's no margin. We're not making a profit on this. We're, we're, we're just looking to help drive down costs and then pass on the net savings to each participant. So, as I mentioned, we have been working with a number of cities. This is the list where we are currently. Belmont actually just approved. So, we have five cities that have approved participation in the project. And we're moving forward with the others and the counties. So, we've been, you know, very happy to have committed partners. And hoping obviously that Millbrae will, will be one of those. So, the rec center is what we're looking at. Brief history on this project. We originally were looking at the Chet Cootie Building and the surrounding complex. That was part of an earlier project intake process, and I think that this, this project wasn't as far along as it is at that time. When we presented on the Chet Cootie design to staff, they brought up, you know, I think an excellent point that we have this building. That is nearing completion. It would be a great, I think it would be great for, for, for everyone to have that solar on. As soon as possible. It's obviously a new building, so there's no considerations about roof. We can, you know, hopefully they're gonna prepare some conduits and, and, and. Racking pre preliminary work so that it would be more cost effective to, to use this, this facility, since it's not as much of a retrofit. So, we think it's a great idea. It's a, it's a large solar project, about a hundred and fifty kilowatts. And so far, we are, we are working with your team and their consultant, Intermountain Energy. Ours is McAlmont Engineering. We, you know, eventually will want our, will want McAlmont to sign off on. Everything because we are, you know, again, putting everything together in one package. We want it all to, you know, be vetted by the same entity. But so far, everything looks great in terms of what Intermountain's doing. I, you know, wanted to do some preliminary estimates. Obviously, the building is not in operation, so we don't know what the actual load is. But we can look at how much energy this solar system would generate and then based on the rate. And I'm assuming that it will be a B-ten rate. There are, we will explore what might be the optimal rate if there's another rate. But for this rate, most of the savings will be energy. That's the dollar per kilowatt hour component of the bill. There's also a demand charge component to a bill, which is assessed on the maximum energy use of a building. In a month. And so, if that maximum demand is coincident with the sun shining, the solar will help reduce that cost. If the maximum demand is at nine PM at night or eight PM at night, it won't. So, we can't promise because it's very variable depending on what the demand is. But we do expect there would be some modest benefit from a demand charge savings at all. So, what this is just to show you is, based on this rate, if this solar system shows up on the roof of the building tomorrow. We would expect it to save about forty thousand dollars in energy bills over the next, per year, starting in the next year. And so, that's not taking into account the cost of getting the equipment there, but just that's how much the bill would be reduced. But we also want to look at what is, there is a cost to getting the equipment there. And the way this, this program is working is that the. The cost of the equipment is, is part, is, is basically taken out of some of that savings. And so, some of the savings go towards the equipment costs. We have a small portion that will go to PCE. To cover our, our variable costs of running the program, being on point for maintenance over the course of the project, et cetera. And then everything else gets passed along to, to you. And so, just looking at this. So, this hundred fifty-five kilowatt system would expect to generate about forty thousand dollars a year of savings. The cost of the equipment, now this is the wild card right now. We, the next step will be, once we have commitments, we will go out to an RFP. And we will get firm pricing and we will, you know, be open book and showing you what that pricing is. You know, as everybody knows, this is a crazy time in terms of supply chain. So, you know, we're hoping that it's not going to impact pricing too much, but we obviously don't know. And then, so, once we net out the equipment costs and the PCE costs. We would expect about ten thousand dollars to be left for savings for, for this facility. And again, there's, there's no upfront cost to this. It's not like you have to put out any money upfront to get the ten thousand. It's just a part of the overall savings that the solar generates. And again, I mentioned demand charges. We'd expect another five to ten percent from demand savings if. The, if it is a B-ten rate. And that would be, there would be no netting of that. That would just be additional, whatever that is, that would just be your net savings. We're expecting the projects to be twenty. We're expecting the projects to be a twenty-year life, so it would be a twenty-year commitment. At that point, a lot of questions come up as, well, who owns the equipment? I can get into more detail on that if if council members want. But essentially, during the course of the the life of the PPA, Millbrae would not own the equipment. At the end of the twenty years, I think we're expecting that you probably would want to own it and we would probably want you to own it. And so we would have, that ownership would 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 go to you after the PPA is complete and we would, we would work that out. And then one point just to mention here is that the NEM, the Net Energy Metering tariff, which is the tariff under which solar projects are connected into the utility system and how they can save money, reduce your bill. There is a revision underway that could negatively impact the financials of solar projects. And so in the past, when they have revised NEM, and this is a utility commission proceeding, in the past, when they have revised those, when they've changed the NEM rules, projects that had reached a certain point are grandfathered in under the previous NEM tariff. And so we really want to try and get this moving as quickly as possible to get to that point because we don't know when that final decision is going to be, going to come down. But we know that it's, it's an active proceeding and well underway. Just to note about that ten thousand dollars, I think it's important to think about this, not just what's the year-one savings, but what's the overall savings over the course of of the project life? And in that sense, you have to look at what are utility rates going to do in that period? And PG&E is, you know, is on record effectively saying, we're sure rates are going to go up five percent a year through 2026. And I think it's reasonable to believe that that's not going to stop in 2026. And so just to give a sense of what's this ten thousand worth over the course of twenty years, if your utility rate's going up at five percent a year, so your savings are getting better every year. We put in a, an escalation rate of one percent just for this analysis. Actually, our goal is zero percent and we don't generally do escalation in our own wholesale energy contracts. But just to be conservative, if we, you know, for whatever reason, we need to, even at a one percent escalation on the PPA versus a five percent, you can see how the savings over twenty years, you know, become significant. Depending on whether you do a simple or, you know, MPV at discount rate, it's more than half a million dollars. And again, it's, there's not an upfront cost for it. So that's an amazing return on a zero-dollar investment. So where we are in terms of commitments are, we're asking each city to adopt a resolution that basically authorizes the city manager to move forward with this project. If we can come back after this RFP and with a PPA and and show that it will provide either cost-effective, cost-effectiveness benefits or you, you know, also in conjunction to whatever other, you know, sustainability or other benefits that that you see and that you'll move forward with it at that point. So that's the full presentation, Rafael. I don't know if you got any further thoughts you wanted to add.
We're very excited about this, this pilot. It'll be an opportunity to to deliver lower costs for city facilities. And as noted, this would just be the start. And the resolution is structured to allow the city to continue to participate in adding additional sites, possibly even to this round or future rounds of such procurements.
Thank you, Mr. Frybush and Mr. Reyes. I know that Councilman Holber and I were at that meeting. And I want to, from the City of Millbrae, thank you for the public and the rest of council. The PCE had been moving forward quickly with basically putting solar on the Chet Cootie or the City Hall complex. And the REC Center has been going up and they made that change with us. And I, I understand you've been working really well with our staff, with Jane Cow, and we're very grateful for that. So thank you for that. Council comments? Gina Papin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Real quick, correct me if I'm wrong, city manager, the conduits are already there.
That is correct.
Okay, so that sounded like a question when presented. Well, thank you first and foremost, gentlemen. My apologies. Thank you very much for your presentation and your interest in helping us in this process. Will our staff be able to, three questions, will our staff be able to check or track the amount of power being used? I know a lot of new systems, the owner can check on their cellphone. Is that part of this process?
Yeah, you know, we certainly want, we, we are, you know, obviously very, ourselves interested in making sure that people understand energy and clean energy. So we are very motivated to, and all these buildings, we're doing our public buildings and we've had similar questions elsewhere. So we couldn't say exactly what the mechanism is going to be for monitoring, but we want to, we definitely want to make sure that that is is part of these projects, not just for your staff, but also for the public if that's, you know, there's some way to make that happen.
Well, yeah, and we saw, I think we all saw the Half Moon Bay Library actually had it on a monitor within the library, which was very interesting. So we intend to have a monitor somewhere in that building. If we can similarly get something like that, that'd be great. Secondarily, we had talked about future adding panels in the parking lot, maybe to increase this. Would that be an element that we have to consider now or how does that work into this process?
Yeah, we discussed this with Tom and Jane earlier today, actually. So at this point, I definitely, we definitely recommend just moving forward with the rooftop, primarily because we don't know what the the actual load of the building is going to be until we know the the load. I think Jane mentioned that they are expecting that the rooftop will cover close to ninety percent of the load that they're predicting. So I think we'd want to wait and see what does it turn out because we don't want to put, we can't put out, if we put out more solar than the building uses, then that's basically, the the savings don't go above what your usage is. So as Rafael mentioned, this is, the plan, our plan is that this is going to be an ongoing program. And so there is nothing that would stop in a future, future procurement round to do the the carport.
Final question then, thank you very much. Why would we want twenty-year-old solar panels in the future?
No, it's, it's a good question. You know, the life of these, of these tends to be longer than twenty years. It could be twenty-five to thirty. So after year twenty, and assuming that utility rates have gone up a lot, you know, those, those panels, I mean, they won't, they do degrade a little bit. So they won't put out as much energy in year twenty as they did in in year one. But then you'll capture all the savings. So if it's, you know, whatever, if it's at that point, if it's a hundred thousand dollars a year of savings, rather than any money going towards the equipment at that point, it all goes to you.
Okay. And I'm sorry, the last question is two. I have solar panels. I have to have them cleaned. Is that calculated into this process?
That would be part of the maintenance and that would be on us. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman, Councilman Holber.
Thank you. I think Councilman Papin covered most of what I was going to ask. The only other question I have, is there a, a storage system as part of this so that if there's a day that the facility is closed, but it's a sunny day, it could still be storing energy that day?
So for, at this point, storage is not part of this design. But we're making all the projects what we're calling storage-ready. There's, you know, several buildings where, you know, one thing about storage is pricing is a lot less known at this point. There's a lot of competition for lithium-ion, which would be most likely the technology from the EVs. So the prices are high in addition to supply chain issues. So there's a lot more variability. We don't know, we don't really have any sense what to expect. And there's some, we also then have to look at what are, what are we, are we going to back up and are we going to try and do some resilience? And if so, usually you have to look at backing up part of the building, not the the whole building because the batteries are still expensive. So the short of it is, there are a lot of questions that need to be answered there. But we are, we're going to size all the panels and and conduits and things so that you can more easily plug a a storage system in later. So there's nothing we're doing now that's going to make putting in storage later less easy or less cost-effective. And frankly, it may make sense to just wait a couple of years and see where prices are then.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much for your quick work on this. It's a pretty short timing for us in terms of the building construction schedule and it sounds like the NEM tariffs as well. So thank you for working on this and thank you also for considering those other issues such as panels in the in the parking lot that may need at some point down the road and storage as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Vice Mayor Oliva.
Thank you so much. This is super, super great. I would just like, are we going to see the contract prior to signing a contract of of any form after this meeting?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. The next step would be, once we have, once we go to RFP and have pricing come back, we would then share with with your staff the a P, a power purchase agreement that specifies what the, what the pricing is and what the terms of the contract are and then they can, you know, review that.
Perfect, because I, I agree a hundred percent with Councilmember Papin that, like, twenty-year-old solar panels, there's not something that I would want to negotiate in any contract or maybe credit back, you can buy them back from us kind of deal. But this is amazing and thank you for putting it together so quickly. I'm very grateful.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. A couple of questions. In the staff report, just so that the public who may not be reading this, another benefit to this program is that PCE will be doing a contract over many, many projects. So it'll help bring the price down, but it also reduces the amount of staff time, our staff time on this. And that is a savings too on that. I do work in the recycling field. There is, and I do serve on the State Commission. There has been discussion of what will happen to solar panels at their end of life. We might offline talk about some RFP language you might put in for extended producer responsibility on that. It depends, you know, what's plastic, what's metal, what will really happen to these materials on that. And the, I know Mr. Reyes and I are probably on the same listservs, but there is talk of battery storage coming down in price in the next couple of years. So when Vice, or Councilman Holber and I met with you, we talked about battery storage. Turns out we didn't have enough room inside the REC Center, but we did talk about some locations in the same complex. And that could be something for the future for battery storage. I think this is fantastic. Couldn't be happier. Do not want to be held accountable for recycling at the end of life. That really should be part of the project. With that, if there are no other comments, this is an action item to approve the resolution. Is there a motion?
I'm moved to approve.
That was Councilman Fung?
So, second, Oliva.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any further discussion? City clerk, could you call the vote, please?
Councilmember Holber?
Hi.
Councilmember Fung?
Hi.
Councilmember Papin?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Oliva?
Hi.
Mayor Schneider?
Hi.
The City Council adopts a resolution authorizing the city manager to deploy a solar photovoltaic system in partnership with Peninsula Clean Energy Authority. Should the city manager determine there are cost effectiveness or other community benefits as determined by the city following participation in a collaborative procurement led by Peninsula Clean Energy by a vote of five to zero.
Excellent. Thank you, City Clerk and to Mr. Frybush and Mr. Reyes and to Jan Pepper and all the staff. Please say thank you. And Mr. Reyes, I did hear you say that our other project, the City Hall Chet Cootie Project is still on the list. I think we would be very happy in seeing that one come back to us too.
And the way the, for clarity, the way the resolution is structured was intended to to allow staff to to bring those sites in as as appropriate.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you so much. Have a good night, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Mayor, just real quick, I may have myself, the city manager, Dave and and Rafael and Jane on our side. Just, just great teamwork to get this done has been recognized. So my hat's off to to this entire team for making this happen. I know it's been a goal of the city and we've been able to structure this to keep it in line with our schedule to open the new recreation center. So, so my hat's off to the whole team. Thank you.
Now we have to remember to invite them to the grand opening.
I was going to say, it's a beautiful building. I want to be able to go recreate there.
You're more than welcome. Come on up. Thank you, gentlemen.
Very much.
Okay, moving on to agenda item thirteen. This is more, I hope, good news. A review of the final, review of final approved public art and the Harriet Tubman statue for the Gateway at Millbrae Station project. This is an informational item.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to hand it over to our consultant that's been doing the, the project management for us on this project, Mr. Harry Burrows, for a quick introduction.
Thank you, Tom. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm Harry Burrows and I'm the City's Contract Project Manager for the TOD Projects. And what I'd like to do is just give a brief introduction and overview, a little bit of brief history of the the public art on the project and then turn it over to Republic Urban's representative, Melissa Durkin, and her public art team to give a presentation. So just real quickly, a little bit of history related to the design review of the project. In March of twenty, March twenty-sixth of twenty nineteen, the City Council approved the design of the structures on the project with the exception of the hotel exterior. About two weeks or so later, came back and had a second follow-up design review meeting where the City Council approved the site signage, the city monument out on Millbrae Avenue and most of the public art with the exception of a screen wall that was proposed and a water fountain feature. And then in June of twenty nineteen, the City Council approved the hotel exterior materials and the rest of the final art, public art. And the art approval included what was discussed previously, the teamwork bears concept for this water fountain feature, the deletion of a screen wall that was proposed at the western edge of the Bart Plaza. And direction was given to the applicant to develop a different concept to replace that screen wall. And finally, the council directed that the final artwork be brought back before the City Council for one last review prior to its installation. And that's the purpose of tonight's meeting. And in addition to that, in October of twenty twenty, through a collaboration between the city and Bart, South Station Road, which is the road that is immediately adjacent to the tracks that heads southward out from the garage to Adrian, was renamed to Harriet Tubman Way. And that was something that was done, like I said, to collaboration with Bevan Dufty, director, and primarily Gina Papin, Councilmember Gina Papin's efforts to to rename that. And what that did was that created an opportunity for a new public art element to be added to the site to honor the legacy of Harriet Tubman. And that's the second part of the presentation tonight, something that the council has not seen to date. So real quickly, like I said, I'm going to turn this over to a presentation by Republic Urban to review the previously approved art and then have them walk through a little bit of the process that was used to define a public vision and goals to help develop this new art to honor Harriet Tubman. And that includes the process to select the artist and then actually have a presentation by the artist Cheryl Deraco on the actual Harriet Tubman statue. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Melissa Durkin from Republic Urban.
Great. Thanks, Harry. Okay. Everyone should be able to see my screen. So good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members. My name is Melissa Durkin, Senior Vice President of Development with Republic Urban Properties and Project Manager for the Gateway at Millbrae Station project. We are really pleased to be here tonight to revisit these great art pieces that were presented back in twenty nineteen and to present the new art piece Harry described that will be located within the Transit Plaza. So I really think one of the sort of most unique and exciting features of this development are really all the various types of art that will be located throughout the project. As you can see on this plan, we have murals, plans, sculptures. We're using street signs to create art and We're using street signs to create art and all these pieces are so unique and so creative. And then we've also been able to incorporate this new piece of art in the center of the plaza honoring Harriet Tubman and this new street name that I think will just be the highlight of this plaza area, and you'll hear more about that later tonight from the artist. I did want to thank the city for all of their hard work over the past, I guess, two or so years that have really allowed the project construction to advance so quickly. Every time I'm out in Millbury, I'm so fascinated by how much has been built and constructed on the site. So, it's going great and we're really on schedule at this point and expected to be complete in August of next year. And at that time, you'll be able to actually finally see all of this great artwork in person. So with that, I'm going to introduce Evie Simon, who is our project art consultant. She's with Simon Brightbart Fine Arts. And so she'll be walking through more of the specific details of these art pieces. And I think we're also lucky enough to have one of the artists on the call as well. So Ken Coleman will be able to walk through his design for his art pieces. So with that, Evie, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. I think I'm on. Am I on?
Yep.
I'm Evie Simon, and as Melissa said, I was brought on to help with this public art project, which has been so rewarding and incredible. And I think we've got a really diverse group of artists to present tonight. The goal of the public art at Gateway was to honor the history of Millbury, facilitate community, and enhance the experience of visitors and residents with innovative, thought-provoking, and relevant works of art from California-based artists. And so with that in mind, I'm going to start going through some of the work, and I think we've really accomplished that goal that we came up with together. The first sculptures that you'll see are these sculptures by Ken Coleman, as Melissa mentioned, who's on the call. And these are placed at the entry of Garden Lane and represent transportation themes from horses to vintage bikes, as you can see. And these will really welcome people and identify Millbury as a place steeped in the history of the journey. And since we're lucky enough to have Ken Coleman, who's a Bay Area artist and got his MFA here at the San Francisco Art Institute, we're going to let him talk a little bit about this work.
Thank you, Evie. I want to thank the city of Millbury for allowing me to introduce myself. I'm really excited about this project. When Evie mentioned it's going to be not only a BART and a train station, but there'll be apartments, veteran housing, and retail. It's a great idea and to have all this close by and it makes a lot of sense. You know, we live in a crowded area. Anyway, the pieces, the bicycle's actually going to be fabricated. I, I do all the work myself out of aluminum in the same style as the horse. And there'll also be two dogs that are part of this project that I designed and built. They're all, you know, they're all handmade, riveted, cast. I have a foundry. And I've been, my studio's in Emeryville and I've been at the same studio for about 30 years. And I'm, you know, thank you. I'm excited about this.
Thank you so much, Ken. It's been really fun to work with Ken on this project and you guys should all look him up. He's got some other really interesting work as well. So now we're going to move on to these amazing pillars by John Kraswick. And he's a Los Angeles-based artist, the most faraway artist on this project, still in California. And these will be in the interior courtyard of Garden Lane where pedestrians of all ages will be able to interact with the sculpture and other visitors and residents. These shiny surfaces will give them a lot of dynamic action and a lot of fun for people, we think. John Kraswick is an experienced artist who has collaborated on many public and site-specific commissions all across the country. Okay, so this next piece is a transportation-themed mural by artist William Rackey. And this will go on the rounded wall where it'll welcome travelers who are commuting on BART and entering Gateway from the station. This mural will reference iconic forms of transportation from ships to trains to bikes, and you can see the sketches that are right there. And this will be a really fun, again, very literal, transportation-themed mural that'll be a really fun mural from a distance and also one that'll be fun to come up to and see close up. So this water feature that is going to be in BART Plaza will be designed by Bay Area artist Andre Karwaki, who also lives in the East Bay, in collaboration with HMH. Andre has a background in expressive arts therapy and an interest in Eastern spirituality and meditation, and that makes him extra excited to provide an experience like this that involves the calming and healing powers of water. So he was really excited to add kind of a whimsical element to that. So he'll be doing the brass features of bears and the fish in combination with the, the water feature that'll be created. Another great place for the community to gather. Here you can see these great sculptures by Ken Kelman again, and these will be in the passeo. So these will be dogs that will be more, a little lower to the ground, which is really fun, which means that people will really be able to interact with these as well. And what we really liked about this and having Ken's Coleman, Ken Coleman's work come through the project is that it has this nice continuity where you see those two massive features coming in at the entrance. And then as you go to this place for the residents, you can see more of his work, but in a completely different scale. Oh, sorry, I missed that. There's, there's another mural wall in the, in the passeo there, and that's going to be another wall where we really bring in the idea of land and sky to make this passeo area that is kind of closed off with that barrier into a really bright and more whimsical, open space. So here's the work from Linda Rainsford. She's also a prominent Bay Area artist, and her media is new and vintage sign material. And she uses this in a compelling way to incorporate the wayfinding of all of our journeys into colorful, whimsical pieces of art. So these will be spheres that hang on various places along the project, and then there'll also be some pieces on the ground, another way to build some continuity. And the fun thing about this is that she'll be able to customize the words on these bands of steel and bands of sign material that you can see. You can see in the image on the left, that's what they look like when they're done, but she's going to add these words. So we'll be able to choose the words that speak about Millbury and as another way of bringing in the history of Millbury into the project. So those will be customized with specific words relating to Millbury. I think that's my last slide. Is that right?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, thank you so much.
So, thank you. It's been such a treat.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Thank you to Oh, we're still going?
Yeah, we're still going.
Okay, keep on, keep on going.
Great, thank you. Okay, so now we are moving on to our newest art piece for Gateway at Millbury Station.
Harriet Tubman, sorry.
Yes, which is really inspired by the street naming of South Station Road. So really starting with the city's idea to rename the street after the inspirational Harriet Tubman. And then the BART Board did adopt the resolution in October of 2020 to officially make the street Harriet Tubman Way. So Republic did want to sort of commemorate this name change and honor Harriet Tubman's legacy through this new piece of artwork. We decided the first step should really be forming this committee that would ultimately choose the artists and really ensure that the art did convey sort of the right vision and message to the community. So we do have some of our committee members on the call tonight. I see Alexis Lewis and Steve Henderson. Steve is actually going to walk us through the artist selection process. Steve has become a good friend. He is a Millbury resident and also a high school teacher and coach at Aragon High School. So Steve, I will turn it over to you.
Thanks, Melissa, and, and thanks so much to, to the mayor, to the city council, and to everyone in Republic Urban. Thanks to Evie Simon with Brightbart and Jennifer Easton with the BART Art, who's the BART Art Program Manager. We've been involved in an exciting process and, and I want to, I want to thank the members of the team that helped with the art selection process. N双A, in, in AAACP, San Mateo Branch members Alexis Lewis and Michael Smith. We, we participated in an exciting process and got some real input from Republic Urban also, from their team, ideas that we shared. As mentioned earlier, we're focused on community and inclusivity, on the legacy of Harriet Tubman as an iconic American. And, and it's really excited to, to, to seek an artist that could convey some of those ideas. We really wanted to make the artwork that eventually is representative of Harriet Tubman be a centerpiece in the community that could inspire discussion. And our process started in mid-December of 2020, where each member of our team submitted five artists to, to possibly do the work. And then through a timeline through late December, we had narrowed the choices down to two artists, Christine Mays and Cheryl Deracote. Deracote, excuse me. And then by early March of 2021, we, we, we had presentations by each of the artists. And, and ultimately by late March of 2021, we decided to, 2020, excuse me, we decided that Cheryl Deracote would be the artist for this really fantastic public art piece. And so we're just so excited for, for the city of Millbury and for the coming together of all of these ideas that, that all of us will be able to enjoy and thankful for what lies ahead. So I'm going to hand it back to Melissa and look forward to hearing from Cheryl about her piece of work.
Great. Thank you so much, Steve. So I do want to point out that this artwork was previously presented at the Millbury Cultural Arts Commission on May 14th of this year, and I think it was very well received. So tonight, we are pleased to have the City Council see this new piece of art, really learn the inspiration behind it, and then meet the great artist Cheryl Deracot. So with that, I will turn it over to Cheryl.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Steve and Evie. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, also City Management Team. I'm going to share my screen now. And what I'm going to do is walk you through just some of the excerpts of the actual proposal that I submitted, so you can see the elements that respond to the RFP that Steve shared with you. First off, my name is Cheryl Deracot. I actually live in San Francisco in the Twin Peaks neighborhood on Aloney Land, and my studio is located in the Bayview neighborhood in Islas Creek. I must confess, after getting this project, I moved into a bigger studio. So I moved into Islas Creek this past summer. Prior to getting this commission, I had just done my first couple of public art projects, and they were a little smaller. I had a public health commission from the city of San Francisco to design a culturally appropriate face mask for the Black community in San Francisco. And I'll hold up the mask here, which features the conch shell, which set off the Haitian Revolution. And I also did this billboard project, which included, much to my great joy, the legendary Judy Chicago. I know many people have seen her show recently at the De Young. And my billboard highlighted the challenge of Black communities near oil refineries. So it paired my picture of Richmond with a quote from a Clean Air Task Force NAACP report. My first solo show was at the Museum of the African Diaspora, and this really established me as an artist in 2016, as a professional artist, as well as someone who elevated the faces of formerly enslaved people in glass. My primary mediums are warm glass, which is kiln work, and also work on paper. And there you can just see a few more of my portraits on glass. So that's enough about me. Let's talk about Harriet Tubman. What I loved about the RFP is that it was an opportunity to really respond to the breadth of her life. I think most of us know her as the legendary conductor of the Underground Railroad, but we don't also think about her Civil War service, the fact that she was a mother. She was very much a general contractor and a developer in her own right. At the time of her death, she had 37 acres of property in Auburn, New York. We don't have a conversation about Harriet Tubman as a philanthropist. She left that property to the local AME church, where she had been a member for many years in New York City. And last but not least, Harriet Tubman was a mother. You know, I love this picture of Harriet. Seated next to her is her second husband, who was 22 years younger than her. So as a result, they adopted the young woman standing in between the two of them. So she was very much an iconic American woman. The concept for the sculpture is rooted in her properties. Here you see one of the structures that was actually on her property. It was a hospital for formerly enslaved people, which included John Brown Hall in memory of her friend John Brown. And my actual design is rooted in her house. This property is still standing in Auburn, two-story brick house. And you will see in a moment, the design is actually based on that lower side profile of the house, because one of the specifications of the RFP was that it would have a four-foot footprint. So it was an idea of how to design something that had a house feel, but still fall within that footprint. So here you see Freedom's Threshold, which is my design for a monument to Harriet Tubman. That's me standing there. I'm 5'5". Harriet will be eight feet tall within the overall 12-foot-tall structure. And then, as you see, the base of the sculpture is the four-foot square. The center part of the sculpture is glass, because that's what I do. And so each of those, the largest ones are each 10-inch-square glass tiles that will build her image up in the center. The frame is powder-coated aluminum, and I'm partnering with a California-based firm in Petaluma Eclipse Designs that has done a lot of public art around our state. The sculpture will be lit both from the bottom and around Harriet Tubman. What you're looking at are four base lights, which Republic has graciously agreed to install at the base of the sculpture. And then her actual image in glass will be illuminated with a thin strip of waterproof LED lights. This will show you a little more about the materials, so you can see the glass palette that I'll use. And I just want to highlight that Harriet Tubman's image will be fully glass. It'll be made from powdered glass, so that when the tiles are actually fired, it's all glass. It's not paint, it's not ink. So forgive me for that, because a lot of times people look at my work and think I'm either painting on glass or I'm doing some type of ink process on the glass. Last but not least, the RFP wanted an opportunity for community input. So I designed the base of the sculpture to have 14 brick-like shapes. They won't be as thick as bricks, but they're the size of conventional bricks of two by eight inches that can have words pertaining to Harriet Tubman's life. So I put some sample words up, and I plan to convene focus groups from perhaps some of the veterans or local veterans associations, since we're since we're gonna have veterans housing at the Republic Development, as well as the local AME church of San Mateo County, because I think that's a nice tie-in to her philanthropy. And so I just picked some words to give you a feel for how that may look. I believe if I'm in a room of veterans, the word "service" may come up. I think that's a safe word to have. And since the design is based on home, if I pick a word, I would probably pick "home." There are fourteen brick-like shapes, which actually relate to the number of trips that Harriet took on the Underground Railroad. So that concludes my presentation. I want to thank you very much again for this opportunity, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I'll give it back to Melissa. Thank you.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Cheryl. And so that does conclude our presentation. So the team is here and can answer any questions.
Excellent. This is just fantastic. Thank you, Ms. Deracott. I can't wait to see it up, but August can't come soon enough. I'm sure there are gonna be some questions. Melissa, thank you. Harry, thank you. Ryan, you were with us in the beginning at those council meetings. I have some questions, but I'll hold mine for the end. But thank you all, and thank you, Republic Urban. For the public, we now do have two pieces of public art. One sits in front of City Hall, and another was just painted by a muralist at our skateboard park, which sadly, we didn't get to film its production. So when I come back to all of you with your artists, if we can get some video on some of the design and completion work, that would be part of our living history. With that, I know Councilwoman Papin's hand is raised, and then I would like to open this up to public comment. I see some of our commissioners here, as well as our new Park and Rec Commissioner, Steve Henderson. Thank you, Steve. So Councilwoman Papin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you to the NAACP Alexis, Steve, everyone who assisted in this process. Miss, how do we pronounce it? Derek Cott? Did I get it close?
Perfect. Derek Cott. Thank you.
Derek Cott. Thank you so much. Some quick questions, because we talked about faces and how important, to me anyway, and I think to anybody who visualizes your art, I think faces are so important here. And it seems like the current design, Harriet's face is kind of obscured by one of your window panes there. And I mean, I really want people to get the feeling of this iconic woman and how, you know, I I I don't know where you are in this process, but to me, that would be so meaningful to really see her in her entirety there. I know where you were going with the the structure on property. I see that from the design, and I, you know, I just want this to be so meaningful. So I I don't know if you considered that or if anybody has discussed that during this process, but to me, we're trying to really get her and people to realize the importance of her. I mean, I know when I saw the movie and I presented this to our art committee and it's gotten this far, so I think this is really wonderful. But has there been any consideration on that front?
So thank you for your question. I think certainly there is room to adjust it. I just, let me share a screen quickly again. I just pulled that back up. And so I do think that there is room to adjust where the bar actually, where the grid actually sits. So to avoid that issue, you know, I think it is possible to adjust that so that her head actually sits within one square, or at least her face is within one square, and then perhaps her hair might be into the next square. So I don't think that's a hard adjustment to make.
I I think, you know, I I just want this to be as meaningful as possible, and I think that would be so much more impactful if that's possible. I think that'd be great. You know, you hate to things, but it's our job to bring things up at this point in time. And I want to make sure it's maintained. So the, I love the lighting. How are we gonna make sure that's maintained far beyond any of us? Because the drama of the piece itself, I think, is really important, and the lighting, I think, does that. So I really want to make sure we're able to maintain it, or Bart is able to maintain it.
Actually, Republic Urban Properties is able to maintain it because that is the contractual relationship. And I believe those LED lights, I think they last at least fifteen or twenty years. So I don't think we'll have a lighting issue.
Well, great. I just want to, I want to make sure that continues because I think that really adds to your piece there. And I do, I love the words and the significance of the fourteen. I I think that's really important. As much history as we can give to Harriet Tubman, her story, the whole idea here, I mean, I'm hoping we have a a dramatic station improvement overall, so we can even have a Harriet Tubman station down the line. So thank you so much, and I do appreciate your considering my comment there. Now, to some of the other art representations here, if I might, the mural, the large mural screen you presented, one of the designs has a Greyhound bus, Greyhound dog on the bus, and we don't really have Greyhound at the station. So one of the pictures had that, one of it, one of them didn't. If we are reflective of this station and what transportation goes through here, we would like to, Urban, to take a look at that.
Yeah, I think we could definitely, we don't have to represent any type of bus service. So that's a, that's a fine comment.
Okay, please. And then some of the other thing, we have never actually, we only have a rendering of the fountain. At some point in time, are we actually going to see what's being presented there? Everything else we we see. So we've never actually seen anything but a rendering along those lines. And we're, you know, looking to that was, the fountain was very important to all of us when we were approving the project. So if we can get something a little clearer on that. Finally, to the words on the hanging balls there. It does interest me on what's going to be, I know, Ruben's laughing at how I said that, but the sculptures that you have, the circular items there currently say Southern Pacific, which is not a railroad that goes through here. So it is of interest to us as to what exactly you said would reflect Millbrae on those.
So I can answer that if you'd like. Those are just renderings that Linda Rainsford did, and she has not had a discussion about any of the words that would be on there. It's difficult for her to make those, and so she just had put those words in there. But we'll make sure we can, I can talk to Melissa and talk about how you want to go about choosing the words or approving the words. But we had come up with several, I think, at one of the city council meetings that we had, I had gone to the Train Museum and also to the Historical Society, and we've done a fair amount of research to get some good ideas for that. So we're happy to loop in whoever you'd like on that. And I can talk to Melissa about how we should do that.
That'd be great. We, I mean, we just want it to be, you know, not something that's not reflective.
Yes, of course. And 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 that is just because the artist was really just working with shapes and I, and she just threw those words in there.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, but we'll make sure.
Thank you so much. And then the other two murals that you had there, I was a little unclear. I think one is by what is supposed to be the dog park or the dog walk.
Yes, there's one in there, and the sketch for that is not completed yet because of the difficulty of that wall, which I don't know if you've seen, is like a very kind of, it's got an in-and-out kind of surface. And so we're just working on getting that sketch completed.
Okay, so if possible, we'd like to see what what it, what that ends up to be. I don't think the dogs are gonna mind much, but people walking the dogs may have an opinion about that. And then you did mention somehow that the street signs would be an art representation, and we haven't seen any of those in this proposal. What do those look like?
The project street signs?
Yeah, you had mentioned when you started your presentation tonight that art, yeah.
Yeah, no, I was just referring to the street signs that would be incorporated into those spheres that you had mentioned you wanted to see the words on. Yes. So just kind of highlighting that the art is very creative and lots of medians are being used to produce the art. One of which would be the street signs.
Okay, okay, I was a little confused there. Well, I, um, thank you to all the artists here tonight and everyone. We greatly appreciate all your hard work and effort and look forward to seeing the final projects as they come to life. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Papin. Vice Mayor Leva.
Yes, I just want to let Cheryl know that I have chills. They, that was a beautiful, beautiful. I am so proud that that's gonna be in Millbrae. I can't even tell you. I I I kind of agree with Councilmember Papin and and Councilmember Papin, I'll give you a couple kudos here for bringing up this whole suggestion. Thank you for everything that you had suggested prior to this. I think that, well, first, I have a question. What age was Harriet that you're portraying her in this, in this glass sketch?
Thank you. That is probably shortly after she finished her Underground Railroad work and had settled in Auburn. So maybe in her forties. Really hard to pin down exact birth date for Harriet Tubman.
Sure. But whereabouts? I think that maybe like for educational purposes, because we would love to share this with our next generation. It might be somewhere that we might get a little, somewhere of a little plaque or somewhere of a, of, this is Harriet, of, you know, a little sort of plaque in front of it to give the next generation exactly what this is and what it portrays. Because it's like, like Gina had mentioned, this is history that we want to continue, and we want to be, this, this is like a role model and a half. And if any, if any of us could bring our nieces and our grandchildren and our daughters to this plaque and be able to let them read about it, that would be something that I would like to see forever. And I agree with Gina. Yeah, let's see her full face, and let's say this is when she was, and this is how she was because she was at forty years old or thereabouts. She had accomplished, accomplished this. So I I'm chilled. I mean, I think this is beautiful. Thank you so much for bringing this to Millbrae.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you for this opportunity.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilwoman Holiver.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation and for the artists being present here today, this evening. I think following up on Councilwoman Leva's comments about, you know, if there were to be like a plaque describing the piece, I think it could also be useful perhaps to describe the inspiration for the piece and as to how, how it came about. I think that would be useful for the public. I also had a comment, and I know Councilwoman Papin mentioned those metal balls. It was my recollection. I know it's been a couple of years, but my recollection is that we were not going to move forward with that as part of the art program for this. I recall it being not received particularly well by the council at that time, but I I could be misremembering that. If anybody else remembered that.
If I can step in, Councilwoman, I don't remember that. I know what we didn't like were the words on where that, now the Harriet Tubman piece is gonna go. It was gonna be a wall with all these cities outside of Millbrae, and we definitely didn't like that. But I don't remember ex-nay the balls.
Okay, I may have misremembered that.
I just want to add, I I think we were trying to look for something more of substance. I do remember a discussion about that artwork. And I, you know, was concerned about the fragility of it as presented originally. So I mean, there was a discussion, but I believe that somehow it was approved by the council. So I I'm hoping we don't, you know, I I, my concern is always that something gets damaged, and I don't want that to happen. And and if I could, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Papin, can we let Councilwoman Holiver finish, and then we will loop back to you?
Sorry, one last comment. I don't know if this is technically part of the art or if it's a different part of the project, but the city monument is planned on Millbrae Avenue. Don't know if we ever finally approved the design for that monument. You know what the status is on that when it will be going up?
City manager, I know you and I've talked about it, and, but go ahead. Can you respond?
Yeah, the, not only the monument sign was approved, but also the landscaping of that median has been approved. And it's a double-faced monument sign that that is lit. And it's this, the same design that's in the median's, Gateway Medians on El Camino.
City manager, I'm not sure we've seen that. Has that come back to city council?
That has not come back to city council.
So maybe we can do a quick info.
No, I'm sorry, city manager. It was not approved by the council, and it was supposed to be. So no, it wasn't.
Then let's bring that back on the twenty-third, on that, and see what we can do on that. Sorry, Ruben, we keep interrupting you.
That's all that I had. Thank you.
My apologies. Okay, Gina?
Yeah, so to, I got the name right to begin with, Mr. Deracott. You know, we, we, some of the members talked about a history kind of thing, and I I don't want to take away from your artistic presentation here. And maybe we talk about this with the developer as somewhere nearby, a plaque that really presents the history of Harriet Tubman, or it becomes visual within the station somewhere. It's just, we really want to make sure that we're educating at the same time, and I think that also adds to really the drama and of your artistic piece here. So please don't get the idea that that suggestion was meant as an alteration to your piece, but hopefully we can talk further with the developer that somewhere nearby it would be, I think, much more impactful to everyone passing by. Who doesn't know Harriet Tubman's story, missed that. I know I missed it in history, so I saw the movie. And I'm embarrassed by that, but I think it's really important. So hopefully we can pursue that in a different arena there because it is important, and maybe we can still work with the NAACP adding to it. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Couple of questions on art in general. The, the water piece, given that we're in this forever drought, will it be able to use recycled water so that we can allow it to run twenty-four-seven? And we did all the work to restore the water in front of City Hall only to have to empty it when the severe drought rating came in. Do we know if the artist, the work can handle our recycled water from our plant?
Harry, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't know if there is recycled water that is located on-site. But I know we did take into consideration that if we are not able to run water through the fountain, that we do have like a beautiful slab of rock, that it will still be very artistic, even if there is not water running at that time. But I think it's also low water usage. It's not a huge fountain, luckily, and understanding we are in a drought. But I'm not sure about the onsite recycling water available.
We can always ship it in if it recirculates. That would be, if it can recirculate, we should be okay. And we simply put a plaque, even if it's temporary, saying that we're working, we're using recycled water, and therefore it gets to run all the time because the sound of that water with the amount of noise in Millbrae will be a lovely, a lovely calming addition.
Yeah, Madam May, if I may, I I think we can work with Republic on that, very similar to, and the city manager can chime in on this, very similar to, I think, what's proposed. Very similar to, and the City Manager can chime in on this, very similar to, I think, what's proposed um, for the fountain here in front of City Hall, which is to use not necessarily recycled water, but if it's available, the water that's flushed from the water pipes when they, um, do the hydrant flushing and other things, um, that's, that, that's a source of the water that can be used and recycled, um, or re-pump through there. So.
In my world, Harry, just so you know, that would be post-industrial. It still counts as recycled content. It just doesn't come from a residential source or commercial source. So all good on that. The, um, the murals, if you could pull up the slide, I thought in the staff report, the mural by the dog park became something that was more, um, modern artish, very bright colors. I understand what you're probably trying to do because that space is actually much narrower than, at least I thought it was going to be. But then what you presented tonight included trees, which I think I much prefer, especially given that the trees that were along Millbrae Avenue were cut down sadly during the construction of the apartment building. Yeah, so see that this picture right here, this mural, I can't quite see what the red, I think that's the existing wall.
Yeah, so I think we wanted to show that to show just kind of how difficult it is to actually paint it. It's, oh, it's not a flat surface, it's these ripples. So it would be, I think, very time-consuming to get into some, you know, very detailed, um, murals. So that's why we're kind of looking at maybe just doing some fun colors. And I think the trees that are shown in their rendering are really meant to be, um, some of the existing landscaping that's proposed. So there will be some screening of some landscaping that is able to grow in that space. Um, but anything I think to dress up just kind of this concrete wall is really, um, what our goal is.
Our former Culture Arts member, Debbie Van Wart, found some pretty amazing public art done out of pipes, done out of those curving walls on that. If you reach out to me, let me try to connect you with those. She did a great job of pulling these things, art that we would not imagine that could work, um, even with undulating surfaces and things like that. So let's offline talk about that. Now, tonight we were hoping to approve all of the art. You've heard Councilwoman Pappin want to see what the fountain actually will look like. And I think a couple of us have more interest in this mural. Um, given that there's an awful lot of cement down there, I'm more prone to living, breathing, a tree representing something living, breathing. And we haven't seen the landscaping work on that. So maybe the artwork on these last two pieces could come back when the City Manager brings back the wayfaring or the, the monument sign. City Manager, can we do that? And approve everything? Well, this is informational, so we're really not approving tonight.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're fine, um, maybe working directly with city staff and then they could potentially share some of these updates directly with you, um, rather than coming back to a city council meeting.
Okay, if that narrow area can actually have trees and some greenery, I'm, I'm sure that's the best way to go. It's going to absorb carbon. I just, um, it's so narrow in there. So.
Yeah, I have to revisit what, um, our landscaping plan shows. But I know our landscape consultants took into consideration that that area is going to remain fairly shady throughout the day. Um, so I do need to look at it. And I know we did need to accommodate, I think, some, um, maintenance vehicle access as well for the city to maintain the overpass. So it, it's sort of, I, I need to maybe revisit what it looks like. But like I said, I think really the goal is whether it's a mural or maybe some sort of, um, elements that we attach to that wall, just something to dress it up and make it a little bit more inviting.
Okay, um, and then I know Ryan was terrific in reaching out to our Historical Society. They were appreciative. And, um, I'm trying to be cognizant that maybe Southern Pacific doesn't run anymore, but there is a freight train that runs in the middle of the night. And I don't know if that's Southern Pacific or another line, but the SP did run that line. And I think at the Train Museum is some paraphernalia of that time period. So in terms of the mural, you've got a derangible. We don't have derig- well, actually, they're talking about bringing deribles back, but we don't really fly them much anymore. Um, having some historical materials would be cool. I, I am trying to think, and if my dad were still alive, he would tell me, because he wrote it, the type of system that ran down El Camino Real from San Francisco, because he used to take it to get to Burlingame and San Mateo High School. So maybe a little piece of whatever that was, I don't, today we would call it a light rail system. I just don't remember, but that might be another interesting historical piece. I don't always want Millbrae to be considered San Francisco Airport. In fact, I resent that we are much more than just next to an airport on that. So that's kind of my comments on the art.
Madam Mayor?
Uh, is that Ruben? Go ahead.
Yeah, I believe you were referring to the number 40 streetcar that used to run.
Is that it? Yeah, my dad used to talk about it. So maybe we get something like the streetcar running down. That would be a really nice historical piece to add to that mural.
Yeah, that's great.
But again, I, I, I'm glad you worked with our Historical Society. They can tell you if the SP is still running. Uh, we have some train fanatics, or train lovers, excuse me. Um, Peter Skaren can tell you everything you want to know.
Madam Mayor, the freight service is provided by Union Pacific Railroad, which is a successor by merger to Southern Pacific.
Okay, Union Pacific then, instead of SP.
Yeah, well, I think Southern Pacific has a history, I mean, from the Civil War through 18, through 1991, when it sold the railroad to Caltrain. So there, there's a long history of Southern Pacific in Millbrae.
And I would also add there a kind of bad link between that and the robber barons, of which Millbrae was established by a robber baron. So there's kind of a little symmetry there.
And, and I'll disagree. I believe Union Pacific was the one that went through our jurisdiction. So they may have been bought out later by Southern Pacific, but.
Maybe we can just ask the Historical Society to do some work on that and do the appropriate thing. Um, with that, since we're, we're only informational, uh, I think it's fantastic. Please bring the water feature and the mural back when we see the monument sign. And with that, if there's no other comments, thank you all. Um, this is going to be exciting. And Culture Arts are on, oh, I didn't open it up for public comment. Is there any comments from the public? I know that a couple of them are watching and Culture Arts is working on their work plan this Friday. So, um, this is a big, this is a big deal for Millbrae. This many pieces of public art is just truly, truly amazing. And thank you all. And I'm not seeing any hands raised. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 14. This is also an action item. This is locations for the installation of park benches as part of the Plastic Bag to Park Bench Recycling Program. Um, staff, if you could present.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Andrea Papajon, uh, from our Public Works Department for a presentation.
Thank you, City Manager Williams. Um, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers Andrea Papajon with City of Millbrae. I have a very short, um, presentation. I will share my screen. Great, so I will be giving an update on the plastic bench, uh, to park benches, plastic bags to park benches recycling program, uh, with the goal of seeking approval for the location of the benches. Okay, so just by way of background, on February 23rd of this year, the Millbury Leos Club introduced the project or this initiative to the City Council. And since then, um, over 3,500 pounds of plastic refuse has been collected, which has earned up to, um, seven benches so far. Excuse me, one second. So the way the program works is when you collect up to 500 pounds of plastic in a six-month span, uh, you can earn one bench. So the goal tonight is to look at the, um, the map of the proposed locations. And here you can see on the top map, um, the small red rectangle starting from the top left is the first one, is the Joa Park Entrance from El Paso. So that's the first proposed location. And then as you continue in Joa, there's another one closer to Hillcrest. There are three, um, benches proposed from Hillcrest to Taylor. And then on the lower map, there are two between Taylor and Richmond. So Public Works would be installing the benches upon their arrival on a concrete pad and secure them as well. So we, um, are seeking approval of these locations and happy to answer any questions. Um, anything else about the locations. Thank you.
Okay, any questions from Council? I do see, uh, Councilman Holiver.
Okay, thank you. First of all, thank you for, uh, having this program here in Millbrae. Very innovative program and a good way to get our, um, youth and different groups, uh, involved, um, for the benefit of the community. Um, I was curious exactly how these, uh, locations were decided and if they all necessarily would have to be on the spur trail or if they could be spread out to other parks in Millbrae.
Great, thank you for your question. Um, the Millbrae Community Enhancement Advisory Committee formed a subcommittee. And so there were some locations that were designated by Public Works. The subcommittee went out and viewed the locations and then they, uh, presented that to the full committee on November 2nd. And that's what they, um, are recommending to the council. Uh, I, I'm open to any suggestions. We could, you know, either take that to the committee if needed or, um, if council wants to make further, you know, decisions, that's up to you.
Ms. Papajon, I'm going to step in here. Um, staff, Public Works staff had also walked the spur trail to identified locations that would work well, given the slopes and things like that. And then MCAC members Carol Crisulnikoff, Jean Wong, uh, Myrna Wardho and Donna Eggball came and walked it. And some of them have been positioned near the new tree dedication program so that people who want to sit and look at the trees they've dedicated to their family members or lost loved ones, whomever, graduates, um, they can sit there and enjoy that. And some have been planned to be where the existing oak trees are providing some shade on that. But ultimately, there will be more than seventh. In fact, the eighth bench, I, I see Michael Kelly's hand raised. I'm sure he's going to report to us that the eighth bench has already achieved its 500 pounds. And, uh, we, the city so far, thank you, City Manager, has agreed to keep on going on this. And eventually it, some of them may be removed from the spur trail. But with the, with COVID and so many people walking, and one of the things with a bike pedestrian plan is to look at pedestrian amenities, that's actually the term, pedestrian amenities, and benches and drinking fountains and shade are amenities for pedestrians. So when you look at the spur trail, uh, different portions of it, it is definitely lacking those pedestrian amenities. So that was some of the thought project, process that went behind with Public Works initially identifying and then the MCAC members walking it and saying, yeah, this works with all the other things that are happening to make the spur trail even more amazing than it is.
Can we get the map of where they are up again while we're talking, please?
Yeah, I just wonder if it might make sense to also have, you know, Parks and Recreation Commission look at this, um, as well. Now, I think, uh, I think these are good locations, but we may want to consider putting one, um, at Bayside Manor and Marina Vista, as those parks have, I think, been, um, largely neglected. Um, Mill State Park as well has been neglected. Um, and it may also make sense to put one in front of the new, uh, Recreation Center or somewhere nearby the new Recreation Center. Um, just one of my thoughts at this time.
Uh, they're all excellent thoughts and, um, there are, there was a council, or Park and Rec Subcommittee who worked with MCAC on this. It was John Kiefer. And I think we tried to pull John in, but maybe, you know, these ladies walk during the day as opposed to after business hours. So they can, MCAC can, and it's, I actually love the fact that it's MCAC working with the Subcommittee under Park and Rec Commission on this. So we'll, I, I'm sure they're listening right now and they can work harder on that. But, and hopefully they. Absolutely. Great.
Thank you. Mayor, I can give you staff's perspective, uh, when you're ready.
Uh, go ahead, City Manager.
Well, I just, I, I think Mayor Oliver brings up a, a good point here. And as we continue.
Former Mayor.
Pardon me. I'm sorry. Councilmember Oliver brings up a good point here. And looking at the map, if, if you look at the top-left photo there on the, uh, south side of Hillcrest, the farthest bench to the left, we already have a bench up there. Um, the bench is, uh, uh, just around that S curve. And so we could take this bench and move it over, uh, to, um, Bayside Manor Park. Uh, and then we could take one of the three benches here, uh, along, uh, the trail between Hillcrest and Taylor and, uh, put it over Marina Vista Park. And then as we get two more benches in, then, then we could re, you know, replace it. But I think, I went out to the parks today, um, and, um, I, I think, I think that's a, a, a good suggestion.
And we. City, I, I think the reason, City Manager, I had pushed to get this in front of council because the Leos and the committee, the other community groups that they're working with, would love to see this up. Plus, we're seeing a slight drop in Leos showing up to the actual sorting of the plastic days. And I think once they get to see a few of their benches up with the plaque on it, it will revitalize their energy. They've also been very busy since we reopened, since California reopened after COVID. But, um, if we could just get a few up, there are four currently in our possession here in the city. The rest are still caught in supply chain issues. But, um, if we can get them up and we can have the Girl Scouts take their photo with the bench, the, uh, um, the Scout Troop 355, it will help keep this program moving forward. So, um, Councilwoman Pappin, and then I'll open it up to the public.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, thank you to everybody who's participated in the program first and foremost. Um, I, I agree with Councilmember Oliver. I think Park and Rec is a vital part of wherever we place these. And, um, I think I do agree also with the mayor. This is going to be an ongoing project. We are, we're probably going to have several more, um, projects as we move forward here. So, um, I would also like us to consider in the future, uh, placing more downtown or somewhere around there because every time we have a public event, there are really no places to sit for people. So in the future, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. That's another great suggestion. And hopefully the downtown specific plan will identify locations that will work with or without a widened sidewalk on that. With that, I'm going to open it to public comment. Um, Mr. Kelly, advisor to the Millbrae Leos Club.
Hi, good evening. Uh, thanks, Madam Mayor, City Council, uh, city staff. There's been such, uh, huge lift by the entire community, uh, very proud of, uh, the Leos. It's the Millbrae Lions Youth Group. Uh, do just want to call out a couple of things, uh, to make sure that, uh, everyone stays kind of on the same proverbial page and aligned. I did deliver a couple of the benches that had been shipped to my home. Uh, brought them down to City Hall today. Wanted to call out because look at the map, it's hard to tell, at least on the small screen I'm on. But, uh, the advice we were given that we passed on is to install two benches together. They're only four feet long, so you can sit two people. But two benches either together or across from each other will be, uh, something that more than just two people could use in any one of those sites. So I did want to just call that out, uh, so we can keep that, um, kind of front and center. And then also with respect to what the Leos have done with the community, with Department of Public Works and City Council sharing, you know, the space at City Hall, uh, this. Uh, and if our friends from Peninsula Clean Energy are still on the line, uh, the Millbrae Leos were the very proud, uh, and happy recipients. They donated a $500, um, uh, stipend because the Leos won, uh, a contest around climate sustainability from the San Mateo Office of Education. So thank you, PCE. Uh, the last piece I wanted to share is, this is contagious. Um, the Bay Area Leos, it's kind of the next-door neighbors down the peninsula, handles Burlingame and San Mateo. Our Millbrae Leos mentored them late summer, early fall. They've now got the City of Burlingame doing the same thing. Burlingame City Hall is also now collecting plastic. San Mateo's on deck to go next. Saratoga, basically where our goal is to have the whole peninsula doing this, not just Millbrae. But we also have a great partner in the local safety. But we also have a great partner in the local Safeway. And I just want to thank the community for everything everyone has done. It's great and the Leos are thrilled to be part of it.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Jean Perry.
I just wanted to speak a little more to the pedestrian amenity subject. And the linear trail in Marina Vista neighborhood has no shade, no benches, no water fountain, no place to give your dog a drink. And in fact, there aren't even like turnout on the trail for someone to park their stroller out of traffic. Because it really is a very highly utilized trail. So you basically have to go into the mud if it's that time of year to get out of the way to let someone pass. And, and so I, I think, I think not just with respect to benches, but these other kinds of things that make the area more friendly and more usable. I think we shouldn't forget the linear trail in Marina Vista. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. I know that Public Works staff has applied for grant funding twice to handle San Anselmo to the linear trail to put in some of those improvements. Sadly, we weren't funded for those two, two times in the past, but we will keep trying on that. Any other city manager, I see your hand up. If I see no other members of the public, Eduardo, is there anybody on the phone that I'm missing? If not, closing public comment. City manager, please go ahead.
So Mayor, that was, that was from my
From the, from the past. Okay, this is an action item. So what I've heard is to possibly consider, well, there's one, there's even either moving some of these six or seven that have been identified or to come back in the future with a couple of other park locations after running that past the Park and Rec Commission. Ruben, Councilman Holliver, I think you've got an excellent, excellent suggestion. However, would you be open to bringing this back in 2022? We'll have at least one more bench by then. And having the Recre, Park and Rec Commission also look at some of the locations so that we can begin to get a few on the ground.
Yeah, what actually was, what I was going to suggest, perhaps maybe at this time, we could approve maybe one bench for each segment on the spur trail. So maybe one within Josephine Waugh Park and then one between Hillcrest and Taylor. And then one between Taylor and Richmond. And then maybe let the commission consider locations for the other four to five benches.
Well, keep in mind No, no, I hear you. I think we've got four in hand right now and I'd love to get the four in place before Christmas. Just because they're just sitting there taking up space and I'm trying to encourage young people to keep going as another advisor to the Leos on this project. But there'll be three or four more coming anytime now. They've all passed their criteria. It's simply waiting for shipping locations. So there are at least three more in the pipeline.
Okay, so maybe we can approve locations for the four that we have now, just that they could be installed on short order and then consider locations for the other ones.
I would appreciate that idea. If we could do four now and then the next three going through the process you recommend.
Okay, so maybe one within Josephine Waugh Park and then maybe two within the central segment. And then one at the segment by, by Taylor, between Taylor and Richmond.
Thank you. And then have MCAC work with Park and Rec Commission to identify the next three locations or next four locations. Thank you. Is that a motion?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Holliver. Is there a second? Jean, I see your hand up. Sorry.
Yeah, I would like to be clear that it is appropriate. Absolutely. These should have gone through Park and Rec to begin with. But I'm placement at this point to get the four out. So I'll second the motion.
And let's consider the, I think it's with the Monterey Park, the linear park that was Perry mentioned as a potential location for the next round.
Thank you. I'm sorry, what was the last, the last comment, Ruben?
Oh, I was going to say, I think we should also take Ms. Perry's comment.
Monterey Park.
I think Monterey Linear Park is a potential location to have the Parks and Recreation Commission review that.
Okay, part of the motion? Councilmember Holliver, is that part of the motion?
Sure.
Thank you.
Accepted. I'll second.
And just point of clarification, Park and Rec Commission designated one of their members to work with MCAC on that and can't control people's time if they didn't have time to walk the schedule. But I hear what you're saying and hopefully we can get Park and Rec Loop back in. They've also had a very full plate and MCAC has worked very hard on this. And we're the host city entity for the Leos. And that's how, and that's how it's set up.
Understood.
Okay, fine.
Did you please repeat the motion?
Motion is to approve four bench locations along the spur trail. One within the Josephine Waugh Park segment, two within the Hillcrest to Taylor segment. And then one within the Taylor to Richmond segment. And and direct the Parks and Recreation Commission to consider other sites for the other four, three to four benches that are coming in.
Working with MCAC, friendly amendment?
Sure.
Working with MCAC, thank you. Okay, there was a motion made by Councilman Holliver. Was there a second by Councilwoman Papin?
No, not with that accommodation. I think yes, with your pardon.
But MCAC is running the program, Gina. MCAC is the liaison with the Leos.
Due respect, Madam Mayor, this is, these are going through the parks here. It just, you know, this is
Yeah, but why can't one of our commissions work with one of our other committees so that there's consistency?
When you're putting them near the parks, Madam Mayor. So I remove my second.
I think, I think at this point, let's just send it to Parks and Recreation Commission since they've not had an opportunity to weigh in.
Then they won't get, they won't get put in in December. And four, two of these have been sitting here since July.
Sorry, for the other four, for the four
Oh, for the other four. Okay, fine. The other four go to Park and Rec. That sounds like you are then removing this from MCAC's work plan, but that'll come to us in the next two months anyway. Fine. Can we call the vote, please?
Can we be clear on the motion again, please?
The four bench, four benches to be located along the three segments shown in the map today. Future benches will go to Park and Rec Commission for them to choose the locations. And Park and Rec will bring it back to council on those locations. Is that okay, Ruben?
Yes, yeah, that summarizes it.
And Jean Perry's comment needs to be considered in that motion, please.
I think that's, I think that's implied in the feedback that's going back to staff.
Well, and it's also part of our active transportation plan that we approved a couple of meetings ago. If you dive into there, there should be discussion of pedestrian amenities. Now the question is coming up with the money to do them, especially with Monterey Linear Park where Caltrans, Caltrain has a habit of driving over our plumbing systems and breaking them, which is why the plants tend to die at that park because the irrigation systems are broken by Caltrains. So that's something else for Park and Rec to work on above, that's above and beyond what this park bench project is. So there's a motion on the floor. I'll second it. Can we call the vote, please?
Councilmember Holliver?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Councilmember Papin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Oliva?
Aye.
Mayor Schneider?
Aye.
The city council approves with amendments the locations to install four park benches along the spur trail and direct the four future benches to the Park and Rec Commission as part of the plastic bags, the park bench, benches recycling program by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you, city clerk. Okay. Our last of our new business, we are now looking at 9:31. It is resolution to adopt the 2021 San Mateo County Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan, and this is an action item. Staff, please present.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'd like to introduce Mr. Bill Riley, our Emergency Operations Coordinator with the Sheriff's Department. So Mr. Riley will be providing the presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. I bring my screen up. I might have a problem. Think I lost it.
I see something there, Mr. Riley.
Okay.
Here we go.
Is that, all right, we got it?
Just have to share our full screen.
How does that, you see it now?
Yep.
Okay. For you, we have a recommendation that council adopt a resolution to approve the 2021 San Mateo County Multi Jurisdictional Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, including volume one, which is the Planning Area Wide Elements, and specifically volume two, which is a planning partner annex for Millbrae. Background, responding to federal mandates and the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000, the 2021 Multi Casualty Local Hazard Mitigation Plan updates the county's previous plan that was adopted in 2016. This plan is updated every five years and this is the current update. The planning area for the plan encompasses the entire geographic area of San Mateo County. Plan is a two-volume federal emergency management FEMA and California Governor Office of Emergency Services, CALOES, approved multi-agency, multi-hazard mitigation plan. So it follows their format. Development process included following activities, identification of pump, potential planning partners, partners who chose to participate submitted letters of intent committing resources to the effort. If recall, back in February, we came to council for that approval and city manager sent that letter in. We identified the assessment of risk and natural human caused hazards. We developed actions to mitigate the risks and a plan to implement the actions over the next five years. Public involvement in the development and the review of the plan, as well as review and approval of the plan by CALOES and FEMA. That, well, I might mention at this time too is we do update it every five years on a full update. But we look at it again annually and we do make adjustments to it as needed as occurrences change. As far as planning partners go, in February of 21, a 36-member planning partnership was formed to develop the plan, including county departments, a number of the departments and all 20 cities and towns in the county and 15 special districts. In the previous plan in 2016, there were only 18 cities and towns that were involved in a plan and it did not include the special district. So this is all encompassing in our county, which forms a more cohesive plan countywide. And we were able to work together more seamlessly. Millbrae's plan, we had our team was made up of our Director of Public Works, Kim Keelim, Deputy Director of Public Works, Craig Centus, our Planning Manager, Roscoe Maida, Building Official, Paul Manipot, Christine Reed, our Farm Marshal, as well as myself. The mitigation action plan addressed flooding, landslide, extreme weather, earthquake, wildfire, and climate change. As far as approvals go, on August 30th this year, the county submitted its draft of the plan to CALOES and FEMA for concurrent review. And October 13th, FEMA notified the county of its approval of the plan pending the adoption by the Board of Supervisors and, and planning partners, governing bodies, which includes Millbrae. Once the plan has been adopted, the jurisdictions will collectively and individually become eligible to apply for hazard mitigation project funding, the suite of grant programs under FEMA's Hazard Mitigation Assistance Program. This keeps us online and on track to continue to receive those, those FEMA mitigation assistance plans or approvals. A fiscal impact, one of the things with this, we're fortunate enough that $225,000 in grant funding was secured by San Mateo County Department of Emergency Management to support the development of the plan. There is no fiscal impact for the approval of this plan. However, implementation of it will require funding and staff resources. Future funding requests will come before council for consideration as part of the budget process on a case-by-case basis. And any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Council, any questions? So this is an action item and it's sort of a done deal. And, and it was 140 pages, so I will not claim to have analyzed every piece of data. But if you look on page 516, it talks about the funding that you just alluded to, including community development block, block grant disaster resiliency program funding and a range of other funds that communities can use to recover from disasters. But Millbrae does not qualify for any of those. And then I went further in, I think it was page 567, under the Social Vulnerability Index. And it listed the cities that we've all come to be familiar with are those that are of higher social equity concern. East Palo Alto, North Fair Oaks, the flatter portion of South San Francisco, San Bruno. But Millbrae's rankings are relatively high, very high rankings are actually higher than some of those cities that would qualify for these community development block grants, but we don't. And it's really hard to dive into the data in those charts, including the Social Vulnerability Index on page 567, and understand how we can't be included when we've just had Landing Lane flood. And at the last MCAC meeting, several people from Bayside Manor reported flooding. And then, of course, there was the Millbrae Avenue flooding. I don't know how many other cities flooded in the first of a really big atmospheric river rain. But what is it going to take for Millbrae to qualify for some of these programs? Especially when the data seems to imply that we should be right there with San Bruno. And we should be there right with East Palo Alto and North Fair Oaks in terms of eligibility for funding to help people recover from disasters. I just don't get it.
Mayor, real quick, on the flooding, I, I think that that is a little bit different. We know that the flooding on Landing Lane was due to lack of maintenance by SFO. And we know the flooding at Millbrae Avenue 101 was due to a storm pump failure in Burlingame. And that, that was the cause of those two floods, so.
I understand that, but when you go through the charts for every natural disaster, since they don't consider airplane crashes, car crashes, I'm guessing that under their heat and air pollution, they don't consider air pollution from the airport. They're only really talking about air pollution from the fires that have been happening. In every one of these categories, Millbrae ranks above the median and in the top third of the most at risk. And yet, we will not qualify for assistance if one of these disaster hits us. We don't have Cal Fire looking for grant funding for doing vegetation maintenance. We just don't seem to be in there. And yet, we've had landslides that have taken out houses. We've had houses flooded. It's just very frustrating to see a mitigation report that basically, to me, is going to sit on a shelf. And when we need it, it won't be there for our people. So, you know, I would like to see that we as staff start looking into the Social Vulnerability Index. I was on the Board of Supervisors call this morning, listening to the districting for supervisory districts. And the, the, the way they're drawing some of the maps are based on the Social Vulnerability Index. But one of them puts us in with that portion of South City and that portion of San Mateo, the industrial that portion of South City and that portion of San Mateo, the industrial part of Burlingame. They've got some really weird maps that what we have in common with these entities, I haven't got a clue other than they're only looking at sea level rise. They're not including flooding, they're looking at sea level. People that want to simplify life into one disaster when most disasters happen concurrently. Tom, I see your hand up, but I mean, if there's no answer for this, and we rubber stamp this like what happens at most Office of Emergency Services meetings, we rubber stamp what's put in front of us. I just want to go on the record that I am frustrated when the data shows we should be getting some attention, but in the ultimate plan, we get nothing. We will not get these block grants if something happens to Bayside Manor, according to how I read the report, because we're not in that list of communities. I'm just frustrated beyond means. Councilwoman Pappen.
I am compassionate with the mayor's comments here. Too many times, these ports, reports are just rubber stamped and without further consideration, we repeat the same things over and over again. So, you know, it would be helpful if staff took a greater look at some of these things and how our cities are described, because unless we speak up about our cities and the needs therein, other people make assumptions which are not true. So it's time that either, obviously, you know, this is going forward here, but we should send a letter along to say we don't changes need to be made in future proposals. So, you know, we need to speak up.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pappen. I like the letter idea. Yeah, it's going to go through, it's going to pass through, but maybe future infrastructure committees add this, what other subcommittees do we have that we can add this to reviews from? You know, we've just, we were fortunate this year that until the rain, we didn't have the disasters compounding us that we've had in the previous years, and I'm grateful that we were lucky. But we can't keep counting on that. So thank you, Councilwoman Pappen. City manager.
Well, I was just going to say, maybe I can help here, because this item is an action item before the council, and if you're displeased with the plan, you don't have to vote for it. You can not vote for it and redirect language to be incorporated into the plan and make it make a statement now. You know, you, this is before you. And you, you know, it's it's a decision of the council, so this is what is presented, and if you want to redirect it, add information to it, and you're not satisfied with it, let us know what it is, we'll add it to the plan. Or propose that we add it to the plan based on the City of Millbrae's city council direction and and integrate it that way. You don't have to adopt it.
Thank you, City Manager. You know, I thought about that today, and I didn't know if I could carry counsel onto that when so many of these reports are sort of pro forma, and then I thought about how I would state this at the emergency services meeting, and we don't meet again until January, and it's been Yeah, I I like that idea. But if we don't approve it, and something happened, and we did become a FEMA site, would we lose the opportunity for FEMA funds? That's the one risk on that.
That that would would occur.
Yeah, that's the the problem with this, so.
We're on a timeline for adoption by the end of the year. And I I'm not sure the exact date, but if not approved by then, we will be not be be part of this mitigation, this joint multi-jurisdictional plan. So with that, we we not be eligible FEMA or or Cal OES funding.
So it sounds to me like the best we can do is say going through that plan again, which is terribly time-consuming. Here are the sections that seem to put Millbrae in a particular light, and then it's not reflected in the actual actions. Were not reflected in those communities of concern, those communities of interest.
The only thing too, I I did talk to Bill about this earlier, that this is, you know, county-wide, you know, twenty thousand foot level, that we take this and then and then we create our more detailed plan specifically for Millbrae. You know, that we that we that we tear off of this.
The, there is annual, annual updates as we work through it in the five-year plan, we can make modifications to it. I don't know to what extent they're acceptable, but I know that as far as, as long as we're following in the guidelines, the structure of, you know, the FEMA and Cal OES, we're still remain eligible. The the mayor brings up some valid points. I, you know, I quite frankly, don't know to what extent would we need to modify to make, you know, to make that work.
Well, let me call on Vice Mayor Leva, then open it up to the public, but I think you've given me an idea then with that one-year improved one-year, say it again, Bill. The one-year revision, thank you, Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor, go ahead.
That's, that's what I was, that's exactly what I was going to propose, like to adopt it tonight doesn't put any harm on anything going forward, but if you want to revisit it, you know, and it's part of our our goals and our achievements that we want to bring towards our city, which is fine, it's great. We can revise it and surproceed whatever the county has in it. So as our city manager says, if we approve it tonight with the provision that we come back to see it within six months, that's something that I would support.
I like that, Vice Mayor, thank you. Let me open it up for public comment. I see Jean Perry, a member of our CERT program. Please go ahead, Jean.
I can think of a couple of things that have definitely changed for Millbrae since the last five-year plan. One of them is the the remapping of flood zones. And before, in the past mapping, there were only, I think, sixty homes that that were in a FEMA flood zone and were required to purchase by their lender, or required to purchase FEMA flood insurance. And I I understand that that number at least tripled, if not quadrupled, because many of the properties in Marina Vista and Bayside Manor are now in that flood zone, so that that wasn't even an officially recognized risk until the remapping had happened. And the other thing is, you know, there are multi-agency efforts to deal with sea level rise. And Millbrae is in the thick of that too. And and so I don't think you can separate us from the the whole base side of the of the sea level rise mitigation efforts. You know, it it doesn't just come up partway because we're Millbrae, it, you know, we're, we're definitely being affected by that, and we're definitely making efforts along with other multi-agency efforts to to mitigate that that risk. So I I think things actually have changed in the past five years. And I think we should, as you say, look at this plan to see if those recognized changes have been reflected in this plan.
Thank you, Jean. City clerk, do you see anybody else with their hands raised? So I'm going to close public comment.
I do not.
Just for the record, under the social vulnerability index, four hundred and sixty Millbrans or five point five three percent are in the very high-risk category. The relatively high risks are five thousand four hundred and fifty-five residents or sixty-five point three seven percent of our city. And in the relatively moderate risk level is another twenty-four hundred and five residents or twenty-six point nine one percent. So if we're looking at our relatively high, high, very high, over seventy percent of our residents are at risk. And and yet it it just doesn't show. But I like the Vice Mayor's suggestion. I appreciate Councilwoman Pappen. If I could have a motion to approve the plan, and we cover letter it to the county that we will be bringing back Millbrae's concerns for review in six months, so that we're well in advance of the one-year program, that will make me more comfortable.
I'll make that motion, Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Did I leave anything out, City Manager?
No, Mayor, that
Okay, if there could be a second.
And second.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any further discussion? All right, City Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Also, Member Oliver.
Aye.
Councilmember Fong.
Aye.
Councilmember Pappen.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Oliva.
Aye.
Mayor Schneider.
Aye.
The city council approves a resolution to adopt the two thousand twenty, twenty twenty-one San Mateo County multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan with provisions to notify the county of the city's plan for a one-year revision to the plan by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Okay. We are just before ten o'clock, opening it for council comments, and let's start with Councilman Fong. So I'm not picking on Ruben tonight, just returned from family league.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just a few items here. Working with the Youth Advisory Committee, and they continue to discuss their work plans for the upcoming year. They're working collaboratively with the Leo on the bench project, as we discussed a little earlier today. They're hoping to put together more benches there, so they're working enthusiastically with Leo, so really proud of these young leaders. They're interested in doing a face-to-face Q and A with our sheriff's office law enforcements, so that they can build stronger relationships and have a better understanding of their duties and how to keep our community safe. Okay, and
Sorry, I'm sorry.
And they also met with our senior advisory committees, and they're working on holding a trivia nights together. So, you know, those are all, you know, getting together in their work plan, and hopefully we'll get more updates for you guys later. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Fong. Councilman Oliver.
Let's see, I attended the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. They discussed playground equipment for Central Park. The goal is to replace the existing playground equipment, the playground equipment installed in time for the recreation center reopening. They, at this point, do not feel like moving forward with the splash pad, that was one of the concepts that was considered as part of the park's master plan to include it for the Central Park. Make their, at this point, like to work further into either some type of a sort of a passive amphitheater that was considered as part of that plan, or another option would be a picnic structure, which I think is something that has been been a lot of requests for. The picnic structure of a larger picnic gatherings at Central Park. That's the only thing I've attended since our last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver. Did you want to welcome your new little one?
Yes, can't bring him on screen now, but yeah, I have a son now. My birthday was a couple of weeks ago to Nolan, and that was October twenty-first he was born, so definitely an adjustment period at home there.
Congratulations to you, Amy, and to Nolan. Welcome to the world. Councilwoman Pappen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Congratulations, Councilmember Oliver and Amy. Wonderful new addition there. My apologies to our council, Mike Conneran. My research was wrong, it is Southern Pacific, as he previously stated, who in nineteen around the nineteen seventies wanted to stop the Peninsula Corridor because of failing service. And to, thanks to some future legislation by somebody named Pappen, we're allowed to continue on, so my apologies, Southern Pacific was the one. So want to get that on the record first and foremost. MTC had a retreat and a meeting, and the resolution for the, actually, they completed. Glad to be part of the Blue Ribbon Transit Recovery. We have a Bay Area Transit Transformation Action Plan that we're hoping all the cities in San Mateo County will pass a resolution in support of. I am particularly proud of action item nineteen, which involves transit hubs and their design and connectivity moving through in the future here, and the Millbrae Station is an ongoing project. As noted by one of tonight's items, where we received three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars and hopefully more. The, I just wanted to note, the plastic bag drop-off has moved to behind the portables, because I was there and another resident was there. Our portable recreation center, the bag drop-off is now at the back door there. So if you're looking for it, that's where it went. Item coming up tomorrow on MTC will redirect three hundred and forty thousand dollars to Millbrae for Millbrae's Park Boulevard and Santa Teresa Way improvements. So thankfully, that'll be a nice addition to Millbrae, and hopefully, when we get that, it still has to go, this is a subcommittee tomorrow, but it'll still go to MTC. So hopefully, we will have it on our agenda, and the price points will be there so that our city will our residents can know how much money we're getting coming in. Congratulations to the city staff. Movie night was a great success. Halloween overall in Millbrae was a lot of fun, very safe evening. That house on Helen Drive, my applause. I mean, it stopped traffic. It looked like Disneyland, all the techno aspects of it. If you didn't see it, I'm, hopefully, they'll have it up next year. And I think that's it. The veterans' celebration will continue at the National Cemetery in South or South City there, yeah, this Wednesday too, so we will all hopefully be
It's San Bruno, by the way.
It's San Bruno, thank you. Sorry, San Bruno. Carolyn Livinggood would kill me. The beautiful fence there, so I'm sure many of us will be attending that ceremony as well. I think that's it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Vice Mayor.
Sure, so just, I attended Hartz board meeting, and there's be some good stuff to report coming out of committees. Hartz going a little bit of a different direction. And Sal board was fantastic. It was, I'm working with Chief Corpus, and we are putting together retreats so we can get ourselves in the right direction with Sal, in a better direction, I should say. And the senior advisory committee put together their working document, and they'll be ready to present that soon in upcoming council meetings. But the highlight of the last two weeks, I have to say, was the employee lunch with all of the Millbrae employees that attended. It was so fun. They did a Halloween theme, and they played Family Feud. So I think if I remember correctly, God, I hate to say this, but if I remember correctly, it was between the Public Works and Community Development. And I think, well, Tom, can you help me out here? I think Public Works won. But it was a really cool game, and everybody was dressed up, and it was a beautiful taco barbecue, or whatever you want to call it, and everybody enjoyed it, and I was really, really excited to participate.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. That is correct. Public Works did win it. They stole it from Community Development.
Thank you.
Can we compliment Public Works, because they were out today, and they've been working so hard.
Yeah, they, they were, you you had to hear the camaraderie at that employee luncheon. They just, they were, they felt really good about how hard they worked and how successful everything went over that storm last, a week ago Monday. So again, let's, yeah, cheers to those guys.
Yeah, just if I may, on that note, not taking a lot of time, but we do have a a team, we're calling the Blitz Team, that's just driving the city, filling potholes for the next, next two two weeks, so. If you see any, let me know. If we miss some, let me know.
And they're still cleaning sewer, I mean, waterways, I mean, they were, like I said, they were out today, awesome.
They're doing a great job.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, really quickly, both our Culture Arts Advisory Committee, they've been working hard and having special meetings to prepare their work plan. Uh, they've already written, according to the new work plan format, they've got their mission vision statement done. And I believe this will be coming to City Council on November twenty-third. The Milbury Community Enhancement Advisory Committee has also been working on their work plan, but I don't believe it's going to come to council until January. And we had been trying to get all of these work plans to council in October, November, but the council. Agenda has just been so full, but thank you to both of those. I want to give a a huge thank you to City Clerk Elaine Tran, Deputy City Clerk Eduardo Gonzalez. And Jennifer Lynn, who have been helping to expand adding existing community groups. These are groups that are active in Milbury, but somehow it never been invited into the mayor's coordinating council. The mayor's Civic Coordinating Council me, or meetings, sorry, getting late. Um, so thank you every time, the the ones that are currently working on or trying to get in, the PTAs and PTOs. With the goal of trying not to have our community groups put events on top of each other, it just makes for real difficulty. Uh, the Chamber of Commerce and a number of community groups are working on the holiday tree lighting. So that should go as normal, we hope, on, is it December fourth? The first Saturday, December fourth, December fifth, um, on that, so the public out there, the the. Uh, Cub Scouts are are ready, the um, we're working to try to get the St. Dunstan's Coral Group there. Um, so that should be a, an event like the old days. Um, but thank you to administrative staff for all that extra work of tracking people down, getting their websites. And then working to make the city's coordinating, the community group coordinating page have more information on it. So that our public can find these various groups if they want to volunteer or join them, or just learn how to get more involved in Milbury. A big shout out to the Anti-Racist Coalition and to Gina Miranda, who last Saturday held Milbury's first Day of the Dead event. Including a speaker, a Native American, who talked about uh, the connectivity, the issues of Day of the Dead. And and afterward, she she said she's lived here four years, but she still hasn't really learned how to connect in with the Milbury community. So a continuous improvement on there, but a lovely event, Gina, and something new to Milbury's festivals collection. Um, just a quick update on Peninsula Clean Energy, they continue to add uh, renewable energy. And on the really good side, we've added a germ, uh, so our energy can come from geothermal. That uses recycled water from the Santa Rosa Sewer Treatment Plant to restock the germ, thermal activities. So it's got recycling in it and it will be a sustainable force. They've also, we've also just added a wind farm above Las Baños. And um, another wind, another solar farm on denuded farmland. So they're really doing a great job of putting renewable energy and not hurting the environment while doing it, so kudos to PCE on that. And then um. Finally, um, Hillsborough invited the mayor of Milbury and Burlingame to attend their council meeting. It was because they're working on a water pipeline, a backup in case of emergencies cutting off water supply. Sadly, it was last night and they were doing a lovely job and then their entire wifi system in the city broke down. So that will be rescheduled, but I appreciate um, the City of Hillsborough reaching out to us and looking for places where we might be partners. Or just letting us know what's happening that may have an impact on, in this case, freshwater delivery.
Um, my wife, I went out yesterday too, so I, last night, so it may have affected part of Milbury.
I actually think mine did too, well, it didn't take my computer out, but it took out our our television. We think it was regional and they were so apologetic today, but you know what, acts of God happen, so. Um, anyway, it was nice that they reached out and uh, next time I'll talk about what's happening with airport noise. So with that, um, I'm trying to find it in my notes, Gina, I can't remember if you were at the Lions meeting. We've lost a number of our longtime Milbury residents. Um, Mrs. Gloria Pease passed away a few weeks ago, um, a longtime resident, part of the heart and soul of Robin Lane. And um, um, Randall, our lion. You're on mute, Gina.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mrs. George.
Yeah, Mrs. George, um, Mrs. George, um, wife of longtime Lion, has have also passed away, so. Um, our thoughts and prayers to the Pease family and to the Randall families. Uh, with that, adjourning City Council at ten oh seven, thank you all, be safe.
And Mayor, one last note, let's wish Elaine Tran the best as she goes on maternity leave, this is her last council meeting uh, for a while. And Eduardo will step up and and take over, so. Elaine, all the best.
Yeah, congratulations, Elaine, and thank you both for your translations tonight. Boy, what an added benefit to our overall staff, you guys did great.
Truly, it was very impressive, you both stepped in, um, and Eduardo, you did a great job tonight.
Yeah.
Elaine, we will miss you.
Yeah, I will miss you guys too.
But we're happy.
Thank you.
All right, now we're really adjourning at ten oh eight.
Thank you.